Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We appreciate everybody being here tonight for the Harriman City Planning Commission meeting for this Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025. We'll call this meeting to order, and we'll begin by having a pledge of allegiance that will be led by Ms. Hadley Edwards. Just come forward, please.
Please rise and repeat the pledge after me. I pledge-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Hadley. Alright, we do have a full quorum tonight. We appreciate everybody being here, especially with spring break that is going on at this time. And I'll move on to item 3.3. Do we have any conflicts of interest from anyone on the Planning Commission tonight for any of the items? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 3.4, which is an approval of our minutes for our, for the March 5th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March 5th, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion by Heather. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Forrest. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Alright. Okay, we have a few items on, on our agenda for tonight. I want to go through them real quick. We're gonna have a discussion on, I believe, three different items. The fourth item, we are going to continue, so I just want to make sure everybody's aware that items 4.1 through 4.6 will be held today, and we'll, and we'll carry those forward as, as planned. But items 4.7 through 4.9, we will open those up to public hearing comments, and we'll keep the public hearing open, but we're not ready to, to make a recommendation to City Council this evening. There's still some additional information that'll be coming forward, and I'll explain that again when we get closer to it, but I just want to make sure everybody's aware that items 4.7 through 4.9 will be continued until our next Planning Commission meeting, hopefully our next Planning Commission meeting in two weeks, if everything comes together, as, as we are hoping. So with that, most of these items are up for a public hearing, so before we get started with the items, I'm gonna go ahead and read the procedure for, or our policy and procedure for public hearings. So the purpose of the public comment policy is to allow citizens to address items on the agenda. Citizens requesting to address the commission will be asked to complete a written comment form, and those are found in the back, and present it to the Deputy City Recorder, Angela up here front. In general, the Chair will allow an individual three minutes to address the commission. However, a spokesperson recognized as representing a group in attendance may be allowed up to five minutes, and this policy applies to all public hearings. So with that, we will begin with items, what's, what we're gonna do is we're gonna have a, a presentation for items 4.1 and 4.2 by Lauren, and then after that, we will go through our public hearing process for those two items.
Alrighty, so we're going to start with Big Bend, and we're going to be talking about the master development agreement and the general plan amendment. Perfect, okay. So this is where the property is. We're looking in the northern portion of the city. Alright, so this is the overall proposal. We'll be talking about a few of these properties today, and right now, we're looking at Big Bend Cove, which is the purple area towards the center. Perfect, so the general plan amendment, you'll see on the left is what we currently have. It is civic and community. It is currently marked out as a spot for our future fire station. As you know, the fire station was actually just moved to about a block south of this, so we have a new site now, so we don't need this one to be civic and community. So now we're looking to rezone it to neighborhood residential 2. Perfect, so as far as zoning goes, the GPA meets all of our requirements. We do have suggestions to amend the design portion of the proposed MDA. We talked about that a bit during our meeting, but it will go into depth further in our recommendation slide. Engineering has no issues or qualms with these proposals.
Next.
Perfect, so this is looking a little bit deeper into the MDA. This is our current conceptual plan that we were shown. It is 11 lots on 2.5 acres, as I said. The current GP is civic and community, and the zoning is R210. That does mean that the zoning does not need to change in order for this MDA to take place, and currently, we are the owners of this property. Okay, so this is our first recommendation slide for the general plan. The next one will talk about the MDA, but we can go ahead and get the public hearing started for this one.
Alright, so yeah, let's go ahead and go back one slide, and we'll talk-
Are there any questions?
So, yeah, I was gonna say, is there any questions for, for Lauren on this one?
Just a quick to confirm, by "we own it," you mean the city owns it?
The city owns it.
We the city, yes.
Yep, yep. Alright, and the applicant is the city, so Lauren could represent that, or Engineering's here, or others, if you have any other questions or for the applicant, which is the city at this time. I don't know if the applicant, if you wanna bring up anything else, or we just go ahead and move forward with, okay, very good. Alright, seeing that, again, this, we've got two items on for this particular property. Right now, we are just talking about the general plan amendment. This is meeting the zoning requirements. There's no zoning change being proposed for this one, because it's currently zoned as it needs to be, but this is for a general plan amendment, so at this time, I will open up the public hearing for anyone that would like to discuss or comment on the general, proposed general plan amendment for this property. Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion by Heather.
I'll second.
And a second by Tara. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, very good. So with that, again, and I probably should have clarified this at the beginning, so what we'll be doing today, these are all legislative items. So each one of these legislative items, we are making a recommendation to City Council. Whether we recommend approval or recommend denial, that's, will be taken under consideration by the City Council, but ultimately, it will be their, their final decision for that. So with that, is there any discussion on item 4.1, or do I have a, a motion? Seeing no discussion.
Maybe one, one question.
Go ahead.
And I know this is just for the general plan, but from my own understanding, for a 11-lot subdivision, why are we doing an MDA?
Well, we can talk about that. This is just a general plan. We'll have, we can have that discussion next, because we'll be, we'll be doing that next. So we can hold on that discussion for the next part of it, unless, unless you feel, yeah.
That's just fine, and again, the MDA portion would be, you could talk with the applicant on that, that-
At that point, yeah, alright. So yeah, we, we can have that. There's still an opportunity for that. Let's, let's go with the general plan, though, for now. Any thoughts on the general plan amendment?
I was gonna say, it seems to make sense.
Yep, yep.
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the general plan amendment, item 4.1, with staff's recommendations.
Alright, we have a motion by Jackson.
Second.
Ah, I think, I think Forrest got that one, so we'll let Forrest get the second on that, and we'll do a roll call vote with Forrest.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
And Andrea?
Yes.
Alright, that, that particular item moves forward with a positive recommendation for City Council. We'll move on to item 4.2. Lauren, is there anything more you want to bring up, or should we just, for the, the MDA on this, maybe go to the next slide, if you could, Mitch, for us, so we can, so again, we're moving on to item 4.2. It's the same property. There was a master development agreement that was presented for us as well, and, yeah.
Yeah, I can address kind of that bigger question-
That bigger question, yeah.
Of course, Ryan Button for the, on behalf of the development team, can maybe answer some additional questions.
Right.
So R210 typically would require a PUD approval as well for development. Interestingly enough, this was part of an older PUD previously, but one of the elements of this project is that these, this proposed road in Hammerhead is a private road that varies from kind of our standard cross-section. So we needed to have some tool to address that element. And so this was just the option that was given, or that the developer wanted to pursue, and something that we allow. So it was an appropriate vehicle to try and address some of those modifications that you might typically do in a PUD, so.
Okay, very good. Standard question, then.
The private road answers the question, yeah.
The density itself is actually compliant with the zoning condition that's on that property, so it's just trying to find best certain development rights that are a modification from our standards.
Excellent. And you did say the applicant's here. I don't know if, Ryan, you wanna provide any additional information in regards to it? If not, that's fine as well. Just want to give you that opportunity. Thank you for being here. Alright, any other questions or thoughts? We can open up the public hearing, and then come back to it if we'd like. So with that, we'll go ahead, and again, this is for, we're gonna open up the public hearing for the master development agreement, comments on the master development agreement for this Big Bend Cove master planned community here. So with that, we'll open the public hearing if anybody would like to make any comments on this item. Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion by Forrest. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heather. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that public hearing is closed. Is there any other discussion for planning commission on this item? Seeing none, I think there was a little bit of discussion when we were looking at this potential layout, and this is our opportunity to maybe provide a comment for those. Looking at the Hammerhead that's associated with those, there is an opportunity to shorten those up and meet, meet the minimums. I think it'd be just nice, maybe shorten that up, and maybe provide a little, little additional, you know, open space there, rather than encumbering it with the road on those Hammerheads. Those can be shortened, so just a, a discussion we had internally. So go ahead and maybe go to the minimums on those for the requirements for the, I don't know if we need to make that a recommendation, or include that as a potential-
Probably.
Condition, yeah.
Also benefit the private maintenance of that road, obviously reducing how much asphalt has to be maintained over time.
Yeah, less asphalt's always good, if you can do that, for many reasons. So that could be an additional consideration to a motion today as well. So with that, I'll entertain a motion. Where's Adam when you need him, Ryan, who wants to make other motions?
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve-
Recommend approval.
Recommendation approval.
Correct.
Recommendation of approval for item 4.2, with staff's comments, and an additional comment of recommending minimums for asphalt at the Hammerhead, as opposed to the, all the way to the property line as shown here.
Perfect. We have a motion by Jackson.
I'll second.
I have a second by Heather. We'll do a roll call vote. We'll begin with Andrea.
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Daryl? Tara?
Yes.
Tara, Daryl, sorry. Heather?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Forrest?
Yes.
Thank you. That moves forward with a positive recommendation for, for City Council. Okay, the next items, we've got three items next on the agenda, 4.3, 4, and 5. These will do one presentation by Clint, and again, we'll have three different hearings and motions for these three items. The first will be a recommend, or a discussion on a general plan amendment, and then the next is a zoning map amendment, and then finally, the master development agreement for this property. Clint?
I'm hoping the clicker works for me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, this is the Sorento or the Walker property. As you said, we're gonna be looking at three applications, one for the general plan amendment, one for the zoning map amendment, and then with the Sorento MDA. So this is the overall proposal to, the city's looking at an opportunity to, to have a, an athletic complex. In order to do that, there's some land swapping that's gonna take place to help offset the out-of-pocket costs of the city, and these are the properties involved. The one that we'll be talking to in this presentation is the Sorento. It's about 18.05 acres. There has been some community outreach already done with this project. Community meeting was held in January, and then again, there were public notices sent out for this meeting tonight on March 21st, so just about 10 days ago, a little more than 10. Subject property, again, is just out here on Rose Crest Road, about 12900 south. Currently, the property is, the general plan on the property is civic and community. The zoning is an A143, and the current city owner, or the property owner is Harriman City. So the proposal for the rezone, or for the general plan amendment, currently is shown as civic and community. Previously, this property was considered for a, a future public work, public works yard. That proposal has since gone away, and this property's become a property that the city would, would likely surplus. So the proposal is to change the civic and community to residential 2, to allow for residential development, of course. The little corner carved out on the southwest part is where that fire station was going that Lauren spoke to. So in terms of considerations, when we're looking at a general plan amendment, what do we consider, right? The requirements from our ordinance are, are found here on the left, and generally speaking, it speaks to, you know, how, what are the impacts that this will have to the surrounding development? And as a staff, as we looked at this and, and considered those impacts, having single-family detached, adjacent to, single-family detached, seemed like it was a very, you know, it was very, very much in harmony with existing development. It's not gonna, you know, it's very, very compatible. It's gonna promote the general welfare, welfare of the, of the city. And with this, with this higher density closer to Rose Crest Road, it kind of offsets, as you move to the west, the, the zone and the general plan call for larger lots, so these smaller lots will kind of act for a buffer as, as you move to the west to provide for those, those large lot developments. The second request is for a zoning map amendment. Currently, this is zoned A143, which, which would allow for one-acre lots, and the proposal is to go to R210, and the proposal is, as Mike was speaking to, that proposal is guided by the MDA. So you will get a density of about, I wanna say, I think it was 6.24 units per acre. In terms of zoning map amendments, the things that we consider is looking at the general plan. So depending on the action that this, the, the council makes in terms of the general plan, this proposal is in line with the previous proposal in terms of the general plan amendment. It's harmonious with the existing character of the, of the neighborhood. It does have adequate services, and the services will be looked at again as, as everything comes through for a plating, the, the plating process. They'll have to provide evidence that they can provide sewer water, all those things for this development to take place. We are recommending that the commission and the council approve a zoning, a zoning condition of only 113 units, which is what the, the proposal is in the MDA, the master development agreement, and it sounds like it, it does have the agreement of the applicant for the master development agreement. So looking at the, what's being proposed for this property, this is the Sorento master development agreement. They're proposing 113 detached, single-family lots. There will be public and, and private streets. Those two in yellow are the ones that will be public. All others, where there be, all others will be private streets. As you can see, there'll be two accesses coming off of Rose Crest Road that then service future development to the west. The design standards are very similar to Olympia, and we'll talk to those in just a minute. And then a masonry wall will be installed along the east side of the, of the development, along Rose Crest Road. So as we looked at this in terms of, of compliance for things that we look at for consideration, in terms of engineering compliance, it did meet the, you know, the standards of being able to have services and, and to meet those requirements there. Going through the design guidelines, there are a few changes that the city would like to make, just to make sure that we know exactly what ordinances we're looking at in terms of requirements for the subdivision and development, whether it pertains to the MDA, or whether City Code will, will kind of guide that, guide the development. Maintaining one side of the property unobstructed, so not allowing, you know, any, any encroachment into that side yard setback, so you can move from front to back with a lawnmower, or something like that. That's something that we, has been problematic. And then just providing a documentation of public and private streets. In terms of the building architecture, there, there are architectural standards that you have to meet in each of these developments, and currently, the window trim is one of, is, is counted as an, an architectural element. We're just recommending that that be, having a contrasting color for the window trim be part of the required feature, and not just, and not an additional architectural element. In terms of zoning compliance, it does have the street arrangement that provides good circulation through the development. The one thing that we would add to the staff report is these two pedestrian connections to the north and to the south, so pedestrians have an easier way to get in and out of the development and get along Rose Crest Road. So that being said, these are the, I'll let the commission go through the, the items for recommendation. First, you have the general plan, and the zoning map amendment, and then finally, the master development plan. But if there are questions, I might be able to answer. Again, we do have the city administration here that can answer questions as well.
Great, yeah, go ahead.
Thanks.
Yes.
I have a question. So why are some of the streets private and some public?
And that's probably, that can be answered by the developer, or by the applicant for the master development agreement, when you get to that portion of it. But a lot of it, like Mike spoke to, it's, yeah. The zoning, so the R210, those just require a PUD, or some kind of conceptual, well, some kind of alternative ordinance to, to guide that development, and so that's just the direction that the applicant has gone, private streets. Any others that I can-
Yeah, could you clarify, on the existing general plan, future land use designation, it says civic and community, on, on the map that you showed, it has employment center, business park?
So those two are very closely, the colors are really closely related. I don't think that I have that, but, yeah.
Okay, so it's, it's not, or it's-
Not employment, it's actually civic and community.
It's not employment.
Yeah. I had that same question as I went through the reports, and so I had to verify that a couple of times, but it is-
Okay.
It's the right blue.
Right shade of blue. Instead of that weird purple or something.
Well, because there's, there's no other blue on your legend, and so the Harriman downtown area, that's, that's blue as well, is kinda-
Well, yeah. This was the site that was going to be a public works yard.
Right, right.
So maybe it was thought of as, there'll be employment there, but, yeah, it was going to be this public works yard, and now we're saying that doesn't look like that's an appropriate location for that type of use, so.
Great. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Back to those private streets, is there gonna be an HOA, or who's gonna maintain?
Yeah, the understanding is there'll be an HOA to maintain this.
Okay, and then do you know if they'll be built to city street standards, like the widths?
The street standards are included in the design guidelines, which were part of the packet.
Do you know if they're, if they are standards, like the city standard sizes?
So the public streets meet the city standards, 53-foot right-of-way dedication. The private streets are 43-foot dedications. Essentially, they're, they don't have park strips versus the public streets that do. That's the only difference.
I have a quick question, kind of a, more of a calculation. I know these are still representative and not final, but does this kind of give an idea of the maximum home that could be built on these lots, the maximum size?
Yeah, this is 113 lots, right, laid out here. This is showing-
Right, but are, are they like, are they 1,000-square-foot homes, or 5,000-square-foot homes?
Again, that's probably a better answer, well, better question for the developer.
Okay, and I thought it might be, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know how we wanna handle, if we wanna go through all of our questions now on the MDA, or if we wanna, you know, get all of our questions answered now, and then go through the public, the process, or if we wanna kind of tackle these one by one. I don't know, I'm happy to, we might as well, yeah, if there's anything else for Clint, I, I would like the developer to come up and maybe answer a cou- couple of these, so we can have a holistic picture of this, and then, and then we can move forward with. So hopefully you heard the questions and, and whatnot, maybe talk about the street widths, and-
Sure.
And, and lot size, and home size, anticipating things here, so.
No problem. So, couple things. So the two streets that would be going, I guess, left and right, those are the two-
Could you say your name real quick?
Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry. Yeah, Ryan Button.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The two streets coming off of Rose Crest Road, the two access points, those will be the two public roads. So those will be extending to the property, the vacant property that's to the west. The other streets internal will be private roads, HOA maintained, 43 feet, so same size, you know, as far as asphalt and everything else, it is just the removal of the park strip. We tried to lay it out with public streets, but there's a couple of constraints. There's a, a main trunk line, Jordan Valley Water trunk line that runs through the property that we have to keep in a road, and, and just the dimensions of the property to get the lot depth, the, the public streets don't fit.
And that's the one that's shown on the right side, correct, on the figure. That, the road on the right is where the water line is running, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, just for everybody's benefit.
Correct. As far as square footage of homes, you're gonna be anywhere from 25 to 3,500 square feet would be kind of a typical, you know, probably mostly two-story. We do have some larger lots in a few areas that you, I think you're more likely to see ramblers on those, but, yeah, I'm not exactly sure. I mean, the market will decide that ultimately, so.
So not quite a million-dollar house, but it'll be a bit.
They're getting there.
Yeah, scary, huh?
Yeah. Okay. Again, he's up here for, Ryan's up here to discuss the MDA. So any other questions on the MDA?
So no park strips, will there be sidewalks?
Yes, there'd be sidewalks on every street. You'll have park strips again on the two public streets that come in. Those would have park strips. The other thing that would be adding with this, that will be really nice, is adding a park strip along Rose Crest Road. So on the other side of the street, right now, you have a monolithic sidewalk, and then a precast wall. So you go from the curb to a sidewalk to a wall, and so you, what it means is your street lights, your street signs, everything ends up in the sidewalk, because there's no other place. So by working with the city, and, you know, working with this alignment and this configuration on the lots, we were able to add a, an eight-foot park strip.
I think it was, did we end up with an eight?
I think it, or maybe it was a five, I can't remember if it was a five or an eight-foot park strip, but adding a park strip out on Rose Crest Road where you get some relief, so you're not putting pedestrians right on the edge of the road, will be a really nice relief, too. And then the precast wall, again, would be along Rose Crest Road.
Nice. And the wall will match the, the form of the opposite side as well, right? It's not gonna be a different style, I'm assuming.
Um, I don't know if we've locked in on that.
I thought I saw that. I love that wall, by the way. I, the sheep and the tractors and everything, so, yeah, yeah, anyhow. I thought I saw that in the, in the packet. I thought it was in there, so anyhow. Okay, sorry. Any other questions about the, yes?
Yeah, I was just wondering about the, the green space. Is that just grass at the top and the bottom of the parcel?
Yeah, that's the plan right now. I'm not sure how we would program them exactly yet, but I would imagine we'd do some sort of a tall lot or something in there, at least in one of them, but I'm assuming those are for-
I'm assuming those are for detention, stormwater.
Yeah, they'll be a little bit in there, yeah.
And do you have any issues with providing that pedestrian access like Clint talked about?
No, we'll find a way. Yeah, I'm not concerned about working that in at all.
That's, yeah, that would be appreciated. That's a nice feature to get.
Just got to figure out how to deal with the precast wall and the openings.
Little break, little opening.
And whatnot, but yeah. We'll, we'll create an opening there with that.
Is the city holding those walls short of the, of the open space?
Oh.
Yeah, those are some details we haven't finalized, but no problem to get a pedestrian connection in there.
Thanks.
Nice. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate your time. Thanks for being here. Okay. Again, these are three different items and hopefully I'll clarify those as we move forward. So the first item is this first group of bullets here, so this is for item 4.3. And so this will, will open up the public hearing at this time for the general plan amendment discussion.
Mr. Chair may also just clarify. We did verify that the, the general plan map currently does show that as civic and community.
Okay.
I think the color just got rendered.
Okay.
But the way it was noted...
The way it was presented, it is correct. So the general plan amendment to go from civic and community to residential too. Again, the public hearing is open if there's anyone who'd like to comment on the general plan amendment proposal. And just go ahead and state your name for the record, please.
Thank you. Now, I, I got confused when you said fill out the comment form, so I filled it out, but I didn't hand it in. Is that okay?
That's okay. Go ahead and give the comment and you can turn the form in afterwards.
I'll be brief. My, my name's Gary Cannon. I first want to recognize and acknowledge the service you provide to both the commission and the administration for Harriman City. I'm a third-generation Riverton resident. I'm all, I'm on the planning commission at Riverton City, so I'm very comfortable with standing here in front of you, being on this side of the table. So thank you for that opportunity. I'm here, I'm, I'm not necessarily representing the voice of the Butterfield family, which is the 22 acres, one of the 22, one of the larger parcels there. Butterfields are probably one of the third or fourth oldest names, not that they're old, but of Harriman. Certainly some acknowledgement to their family for holding on to the property as long as they have. A couple of questions that have, that have come up for us as we've started down this road and they, they may want to speak as well if I miss anything. So if you would, for, I'm not speaking, I don't want to take that five-minute timeframe. I wanted to do it shorter, shorter than I see this thing clicking right here. We have two accesses now off of 5600. And our question is, are those accesses, are those two roads adequate? Would they be adequate to service a comparable zoning if we were to obtain that zoning? This is probably more of an engineering and planning question, as well as what does the future of 5835 and the commercial zoning in there for Harmon? Has, has that been acknowledged or, or talked about at all with staff? We've, we've met a couple of times and I just, I don't even know if that's the right question to ask or not.
So right now, we'll take comment and then when we close the public hearing, we can, we can address those questions. So if there's any other comments or questions?
One other one is, just curious, and I know none of you were sitting at there at the time, but just curious why there wasn't ever a stubbed road into the property from the north, probably assuming that it would eventually connect onto 5600 West and that's why it didn't happen. It was just when we first looked at that and that was kind of odd, but that's all I've got.
Okay.
And I'm sure they, they may have some questions as well.
Thank you, Gary.
But I thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here.
Hi.
Go ahead and state your name as well, please.
Harmon Butterfield.
Thank you.
I own the commercial property just west of the development. And I don't know if you know what we do there. Desert Star Transportation Shop. So I was wondering what, I don't feel comfortable if we did have access into my property of running a semi truck down that end of the subdivision there. So I was wondering what kind of allowance we might have for something like that.
Okay. As mentioned before, we'll take comment and any questions and we can address those later. Thank you.
Yep.
My name is Marie Pistana and I am the purple house that backs all of this. Sorry Butterfields. The only reason I've even been, I know I don't have a final say in it, but the reason that I've been willing to bend on this is because I know the benefit that comes from the city with the athletic complex. It should not be zoned for such small lots where it is. We were required to have over half an acre. It abuts to my property and just like you just heard, they're going to want zoning like this right behind me too. And the whole reason I moved out here and built my house was because I had animal rights and I had space for my kids. So it's a big concern to me that that's opening the door for that. Thanks.
My name's Chance Gladhill. I'm kind of confused, is this for, this is for the general amendment?
This is, yeah, this is the general plan. We'll have a hearing for the, for the zoning and stuff right after this, but, so if you have a comment, I mean...
Well, I have comments for all of it, but...
Well, either way, if you have a comment for a general plan, we'll, we'll let you come back for the others as well. But go ahead and, right now, we're taking comments on the general plan.
Well, my, 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 my comment on general plan, I mean, you're going from that to residential, well, I don't know what the, how that decision was all made. I'm sure, you know, there's a lot of money involved, but anyway, my comments is basically on the zoning. I have concerns, there's the density of the residential. I mean, you look to the, the east, there's, it's not that dense. You look to the, the north, it's not that dense. You look to the south, it's not that dense. And all of a sudden, we got this dance in the, in the middle of our, I mean, I, I live in Old Town Harriman, I live on 5835, and I just don't agree with that much density there. I mean, I don't know what can be done about it, but that. And then I'm concerned about the, the, the streets out of the Butterfields property as they were concerned, if they're wide enough or whatever to accommodate future development in there, because everything cannot come down 5835 West. So I'm concerned with that too. But anyway, we're going from acre lots to 5,000 lots. I don't know how many, I mean, I mean, are they going to stack homes there or whatever? 113 lots, but you know, that's, going from acre to 5,000 square foot lots, R2, that means two resi, doesn't that mean two, two families on 5,000 square feet? Is that what it is? R2?
No. But go ahead and make your comment.
But anyway, that's, I don't even know what all that means, but that's, that's my comments, I guess. I, I'll, I'll come back up if I hear something else.
Thank you, Chance.
Justin Butterfield, not one of the property owners, just a resident. But the whole thing, I just, it doesn't make sense. The part that he was talking about how it'd be better for the community, that was a lie, just like your reason for initially buying the property was a lie. Makes no sense to have that density of housing in there. I just, it does, you haven't done a good job of explaining how that makes any sense at all. Like it's, the roads can't sustain it. You want to get that property to help pay for that big park you want to do, the roads over there can't sustain it. I mean, if you don't have the money to just buy that outright and do it in the first place, are you going to have the money when the county splits it? And then you're going to have another, how many tens of millions to do the roads and infrastructure to support it? It, it's ridiculous. It makes no sense whatsoever. You're basically screwing everybody around there because it's, you already can't, it takes you 20 minutes to get to Bangater right now. And it's not just because the tra, the construction on 134th for the last few years. And now you can add this many more people there in that tiny little area. It just makes no sense unless, I don't know, someone's benefiting it from, personally from someone under the table. Like it just, it's mind-boggling.
We don't need those comments here. Please keep it professional and civic or we'll, we'll leave it.
I got to go to work here in like five minutes anyways. I just wanted to voice my opinion on it because it just makes no sense and it's not fair to everybody else here.
Perfect. My name's Landon Visser. I live in Tuscany where lots are around .4 of an acre, which is still pretty small and I don't think that it should undercut that anymore because it is already pretty tight-packed in there. And I would just like to say that the manner of this proposal that has been introduced has led to the significant erosion of public trust. Many residents, including myself, feel that our voices are not being heard and that the decisions that are being made are without adequate community input. The sentiment is exacerbated when compared to neighboring cities where more transparent and inclusive planning processes have fostered higher levels of civic engagement and trust in local government. It is imperative that we address these concerns and work towards rebuilding the relationship between the city's leadership and its residents. The community's opposition to this proposal is evident in the active discussions and debates among residents. Many have expressed frustration over the potential increase in high-density housing, more lots where it's not needed, and the perceived lack of transparency in the decision-making process. A petition entitled, titled "Enforce Preservation of Harriman's Historic District" has gathered a significant amount of support with 887 verified signatures and many more that have been unverified from recent days. And these are from residents that share these same concerns that could not be here tonight. And I feel like their voices need to be heard. The petition emphasizes the importance of preserving Harriman's historic district and opposes the construction of this neighborhood or community, whatever you want to call it, which would compromise the historical integrity and unique charm of the Harriman community. Thank you.
Okay. So you know more comments on the general plan recommendation. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Have a motion by Heather.
I'll second.
A second by Tara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We'll close the public hearing at this time. So a lot of the comments, well, not a lot, but some of the comments we received were in regards to the zoning, not necessarily towards the general plan. I don't know if we want to, at this time, I don't know if there's a need to be a discussion on the general plan or if we want to address all these comments now because we are going to have an opportunity to have the...
One that's, I think pertinent to general plan was kind of the Harriman Historic District.
Okay.
I don't know if there's a plan that can be pulled up that shows the Harriman zoning for historic...
Yeah, maybe Blake, you want to maybe talk a little bit towards that?
That shows the location for that.
Several years ago, we tried to make a map showing the historic Harriman. It was very controversial by the council at the time. And so what ended up coming of that was a curb and gutter exception area that was designated. And that created a street cross-section for roads in the area deemed Old Town that didn't have curb gutter or sidewalk. They had an asphalt path and a swell and then just asphalt for the road. So that's the only code that is on record right now that has anywhere of the Old Town identified. Do you have anything else, Mike, on that?
Yes. I'd appreciate the passion and the concern for trying to preserve this heritage, but as Blake mentioned, there's no regulatory overlay or requirement. Both Clint and I have worked for cities that have had formal historic districts that have been registered on the local historic districts as well as national. And we don't have that as a city, so we don't have that tool to try and kind of leverage preservation.
One other comment that was made about transparency with it, so I'd just like have you maybe talk a little bit about what's been done to present these plans to folks and the opportunities for, for comments.
So typically, our subdivisions are required to have a community meeting with the developer and then they send notices out and they have an informal meeting to meet. Instead of doing that on this one, we actually sent out the notices and had an open house where we had council members because the city was the applicant on, was, was considering this and there was no developer driving the decision at the beginning. So that, we had open houses, people were invited, we had a presentation, we, we had open conversation in those meetings. I think some of those meetings turned into actual meetings with city council and staff and some of the people that attended that meeting. So there, there was quite a bit of outreach in the beginning and then that was all ahead of obviously this public hearing we're having tonight on that. So there's, there's been our standard form of transparency and, and notice and, and meetings on, on this, maybe a little bit more than normal because of the individual meetings that were held in between.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anything else, Molly?
Yeah. Back to the, I'll call it the curbless, the curbless area. How close is curbless to this location?
So it's, it's, so the, certain roads were identified in that, that they had to have curb and gutter and 5600 West is one of them. But like the one that was mentioned earlier, 5835 West, that Desert Star Trucking uses currently to get in and out of the project, that one is part of the curb and gutter exception area. So, but this actual project here, that code requires any new roads that are built are to have curb and gutter. So it's just the existing roads, like it was to protect people that might've had one acre or two acres that wanted to subdivide that or do a flag lot, to not have to come in and, and build that. We had a lot of mix where you'd have a piece of curb and gutter and sidewalk and then five properties and then a piece of curb and gutter and sidewalk. We wanted to avoid having that hodgepodge mix of, of improvements.
Is the fire station part of that?
The fire station would be part of the curb gutter exception area, but 129th, I believe the, the church across the street built curb and gutter.
Okay. So they built curb and gutter anyway.
Our plan is to...
Sounds like new development will be required to have curb and gutter. It's just the old existing would not...
Along, along those roads to, to address the infill, so.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so wrapping around the corner on 129th would, would plan on having curb gutter and sidewalk.
And onto 56 West needs to have the curb and gutter.
And 56 will have it up, obviously.
Okay. So no matter what gets built there, curb and gutter's coming. Okay.
Anything else for the applicant, up at the city? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake.
Any discussion? Again, we're still on item 4.3, which is the general plan amendment recommendation.
I'm just curious about the zoning behind the property. So Mr. Butterfield brought up that he has a commercial business. Is it zone commercial?
It's MU2, which is mixed use. He has a grandfathered use essentially. That's why you see that unique MU2 zoning on that.
And the general plan, is it called for business in that spot or does the general plan, what does it say for that same piece of property? Because this is general plan, so.
Yeah.
No.
It's hillside ag.
Yeah. Okay. The general plan calls for it to eventually be hillside agricultural, but, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. The general plan, my question was, is it for the Butterfield property that's currently being used for the trucking, if it calls for it to stay business or to become something else? And it sounds like it, the general plan calls for it to be hillside agricultural.
So the general plan generally dictates the future land use of the property. So you have the general plan and then on top of that is a zoning layer and that's what the property is actually being used for. So currently, your prop, the Butterfield property is zoned MU2, which is a grandfathered use, so you're considered, you'd be considered, you're legal conforming in terms of zoning, so you can continue that use as long as you're there. If that, you know, if you ever have an opportunity, if you ever wanted to... If that, you know, if you ever have an opportunity, if you ever wanted to develop your property, the general plan would dictate that you could develop under that hillside agricultural into something different. But with your grandfather's status, you can maintain your use as long as you're, as long as you want to on the property.
Okay, so let's, yeah, so that's, you're more than welcome to come in and talk with staff on those particular items. It sounds like there's not really a concern with that property there. We're, you know, right now, we're talking about the proposed development here at the Sorrento. So I want to leave it, leave the discussion there, and really, we should probably keep it a little more formal as well and not have open dialogue that way, so. So again, getting back, any other questions? Maybe I'm too close to getting some feedback. Any other discussion for this general plan discussion?
I guess I do have a question on that historic district.
Yeah.
Michael, sorry. On the historic district, is that something the council would have to request or...?
Yes, yeah, and it's a pretty laborious process. You have to do the inventory of all the homes. Essentially, there's a threshold as far as qualifying to be recognized as a historic. Establish it as a national historic district first, which opens up opportunity for credits, tax credits, making your property towards preservation. National or a local historic district then operates more like a zoning overlay. And then we go over architectural design that contributes to the historic quality of the district. So it's a lot of work. I don't know that that has ever been discussed. Maybe it was before my time, but...
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for item 4.3. Again, these are recommendations, all these for, to the city council.
Can we bring the screen back up?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we probably should have those, yeah. Okay, there you go.
Maybe one other piece I'll discuss real quick is, I do know in and of itself, and not regarding the other property, it seems to be, from a general plan perspective, a nice buffer between the busier road and the interlot. So, you know, having that little higher, a little bit higher density next to the road creates a buffer.
And we can talk a little bit about, on the zoning side as well.
From a general plan.
From a general plan, yeah, yeah, again, this is civic, community, residential too. We can talk a little more, but maybe I'll save my comment for when we have the discussion, because I had some thoughts there too. But I'll wait until we discuss the zoning side of it as well.
Well, then I think I'm ready to make a motion that we recommend the general plan amendment for approval with the staff's recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion by Jackson.
I think it really, oh, sorry.
Nope, that's fine. Go ahead. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Forrest. We'll do a vote. Forrest?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Heather?
No.
Andrea?
Yes.
Daryl?
No.
And Tara?
Yes.
Let's see, that's four yeses and two no's, so that does move forward with a positive recommendation for approval for the city council. With that, we'll move on to item 4.4. We have had the presentation, we have had, so maybe just hit the next, there you go. So this, we're moving on to item 4.4, which is the zoning map amendment. Again, currently, it is zoned as an A143. We are looking to go at an R210 is the proposal. We are looking to do a zoning condition on these, this for 113 lots. As we discussed in the work plan, maybe somebody can clarify if I'm not speaking properly on this, but the R210 would allow even more than the 113 lots, because there is a kind of a, not a good range in between. So with that, we are recommending, the proposal at this time is to recommend the R210, but put a condition on it that that cannot get greater than 113 lots as well. So I just want to make sure that that is clear. And if I misspoke, I'm sure staff will correct me, but...
R210 allows a density of more than 8 units?
Okay, perfect. And city council, I believe, has been working with the applicant on this as well to coordinate those efforts as well. So with that being said, is there any, well, I think what I'll do is just clarify again, we have received some comments previously on the previous hearing in regards to the zoning. And we'll consider those moving forward with this recommendation as well. But at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for, again, the zoning map amendment proposal. So this is for the zoning. So if there's any additional comments that anyone would like to make, please come forward.
My name is Rochelle Ellington, and I live in the Tuscany neighborhood. I'm just asking you guys to consider to change the zoning from an R2. If we're doing single-family, why do we need it to be a multifamily zone? So my recommendation, consideration, whatever, is that you would change it to an R16 or whatever is equivalent to the lot size that we're thinking. In my mind, it makes no sense to do it as a multifamily when we're planning on building single-family homes, so I would like you guys to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Court Jones, I live in the, sorry, Lafayette subdivision. My house will border this zone. One thing to take into consideration, I think a lot of individuals may not know this, but is our public system right now is already overrun. Our school district is already overrun for that area, allowing that many homes to be built in that small of a space. The elementary schools around cannot support that many children. Neither will the high school or junior high. Another concern I have is accessibility in and out of that, that area. You know, I, at 7:30 in the morning, it backs up all the way to Main Street. You don't have traffic control. There's only two ways to get to elementaries and junior highs. You either travel 6,000 West or 5,600 West, adding that much volume of vehicles. I don't think you can park enough vehicles in that zone either with 113 lots. Whether it's private, whether it's public, you're not going to be able to fit that many vehicles, that many families in the road space that you've created. So those are my general comments about that property. I would definitely agree with the size of R16, you know, something that I have at my house comparable and also value. It will also decrease the value of our homes, you know, putting that type of smaller lot right next to adjoining properties. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Court.
Hello again, Landon Visser.
Thank you.
For the record.
Thank you.
I'd like to address one thing. I've noticed your question on the last one, and I think it pertains to all of them, about like political efficacy and community transparency. And the mail-out date may be 10 days before the community hearing, but when people are receiving it two to one days before the community hearing, it's in the middle of the week. And I know that's the only time that you, fine gentlemen, gentlewomen, can come and meet with everybody. It is not enough time for people to make plans in their schedule. Like I'm missing something right now that I should be at for this, to try to stand up for what I believe in, and that we should not be building smaller lot homes next to larger lots to, for a buffer zone, which makes no sense. Because right now, it is a buffer zone, so by adding houses, you're decreasing that buffer zone, in my mind. I would also like to point out that in pertaining to item 4.4, the proposed rezoning for R-2-10 permits allows a maximum density of the 8.7. I know you guys said that you guys would put a cap on it at 113 properties, but once again, I will agree with the lady that spoke first, that it should be an R1, because why multifamily? That makes no sense whatsoever, because if that is the agreement, and if you have to decrease it down to 75 units and they're all single-family for an R1 agreement, I think that should be what should happen. It should not be allowed to be an R2, because changing that after the houses are built is way harder. I would also like to say that it, from any R zoning, is going to be a significant increase from the A1-43 zoning that it is from, which is one dwelling per acre. And nor do I think that it should be that if there are houses built, even though I would prefer it. As residents, I think that we are all deeply concerned that the heightened density will strain our existing infrastructure, including roads, schools, and other public services, especially considering that the land used to be allocated for public works, and now that is being more condensed in the overpacked Butterfield district. Thank you.
Me again, Gary Cannon. I wanted to just emphasize and thank Mrs. Ellington on her points. They're very, I mean, they're very well constructed, her thoughts. So as the other gentleman about worrying about the stress of infrastructure on the schools, we are currently, we haven't, we don't even know if it's zoned for yet or not, but we've had a charter school reach out to us on the 22-acre parcel that I addressed a little earlier. So that might make some of the neighbors feel a little bit better about that. I don't know how to service the traffic. We haven't got that far into it, but that is one of the inquiries we've had, so, thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Marie Pizana again. Having gone through the whole rezoning and subdividing and the whole development process myself in the last, you know, seven, eight years with Harriman City, if this property was not city-owned, this wouldn't be up for consideration. And I know where we're going with it, and I get it, but if it was a single citizen that owned that property, you wouldn't approve it. And that's my comment.
Harmon Butterfield. Yeah, my biggest concern is you got 40 acres west of that lot. 40 acres, twice as much as what you're looking at doing. How are the people going to get in and out? And I wasn't quite sure, what was the width of the roads going into 5600 West?
53. 53 feet, standard residential.
Is that from gutter to gutter?
No, that's back a walk to back a walk.
Okay, how much, what's the pavement width?
I don't know off the top of my head, so go ahead and ask the questions. Then, we're not doing the back and forth. We'll take comments right now, and then we'll answer those.
Anyway, yeah, that was my biggest concern is moving whatever happens to that 40 acres west of there. How's it going to get in and out? Thanks.
Thank you.
Again, my name's Chance Gladhill. I live on 5835 West, kitty corner to Harmon's building there. I wish, I just want to emphasize that I'm with Harmon there. How are people going to get out? They can't all come down 5835 West. There's no way. So once they develop that 40 acres, where are they going to go? I'm also concerned too with the schools. I mean, we have a hard time getting our kids to school as it is right now to the junior high schools with all this. We moved to Harriman. I've been here 20 years, 2005, we built our home. And we're all on big lots in that general area. And even, even the lots, like I said before, north, south, east, west, there's no high density there whatsoever, so I don't get what we're buffering with this. And again, I'm concerned about the roads, I'm concerned about all this, so, that's all I have.
Thank you.
My name's Corinne Jones, and I just want to echo pretty much what everyone has said. My house backs this property, and we've been here for 15 years. And we understand that something is going to go there, like fully understand that. Do not like the size of the lots and the homes and how many people. Like we said, like as a mother, trying to get my kids to school, trying to get out to get to the middle school every day, cars are back to all the way back. Safety issues too. My children walking to school, just more traffic. The schools are completely full around us. And I kind of feel it's a little convenient to schedule this tonight during spring break. So I know majority of our neighborhood is out of town on spring break. And so I'm here representing, I guess. There's not a lot of us, but I promise you, if this wasn't spring break, there'd be way more people here. As a neighborhood, a lot of people are not wanting this. I don't like to get up in front of people, so this is a lot for me. So, yeah, I just echo what everyone says. I understand homes need to come in or something needs to come in behind us. I'm aware of that, but the sizing and the zoning, I do believe these lots need to be bigger. We just can't have that many, that many people. There's just, it's just not realistic. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. Anyone else like to? Nope, you had your chance, sorry. And we did receive your letter, by the way, earlier, just for your information. We did receive it, and we have read it all prior to this meeting, so thank you for that. All right, seeing no other comments, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Heather and a second by Tara. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. There was some information that came forward, Blake. More than happy if you want to come up and we can help, you know, answer some of the questions and concerns on the zoning, maybe give a little bit of history on where this came about and how this, you know, we came to this location, or quantity, I guess, and density out here as well, and then maybe answer some of the questions that you heard, and we might have some as well. Go ahead.
All right, so for the zoning, Michael's probably jumped in whenever you're hearing me go off track a little bit, but Harriman, we've had some discussions in the past about creating some zones for smaller lots. But currently, you have A110, which is quarter-acre agricultural, and then R110, residential quarter-acre lots. And then after that, you go to R210. There's nothing in between. There's no such thing as an R16 zone that was mentioned. We've discussed that in the past, but we've never got that, brought that to the planning commission or the city council for adoption. We'd like to do something that would allow a little more flexibility there. So what you typically see is an R210 or an R215 in these development agreements that are being done. And then that allows, they do a PUD and allow the density to be clustered in areas and moved around. And so that's essentially where we, where it came up with this zone. You're either quarter-acre lots, or you're into the R210 with a zoning condition. Is there anything you'd like to add to that, Michael?
A lot of our single-family homes actually are, single-family detached are in this R210 or R215 zones.
Okay. And then, yeah, keep going. I'm sure you took notes as well.
Let's see, so I just took a few notes here. Schools and overcrowding, that's definitely a concern. We've always been concerned about what our impacts are with these development decisions to our schools. I called the school district today, and yes, spring break is a real thing. They are all on... They are all on vacation, but I talked to one of the administrators that was in Kansas, and he was able to pull some data for me and, and share some information. And so, an interesting phenomena that's going on around the entire school district, except for a couple of schools in the district, are, they're, they're seeing houses generate fewer kids per house. Daybreaks experiencing it, and everything in Harriman, except for the Mountain Ridge area, is experiencing shrinking populations in the schools. So, for specifically this project, the Sorrento project, a proposed 113 units, the yield rate that the school district calculates is .359 students per household. That's based on data that they've collected for housing types and, and areas and, and that's, I asked him how confident he was on that number and he said he was very confident on it. So, that, this 113-unit development is anticipated to generate 41 elementary school students. They're in the boundary right now of Harriman Elementary. That can always change. The school district often does boundary changes, but currently that's what we're looking at was Harriman Elementary. The current enrollment for that school is 674 students. The forecast enrollment for next year is 635, and we're seeing that across the board, except for the schools in Mountain Ridge. They're, they're dipping in their enrollment. And so, the capacity of that school with the portables on site are, is 750. So, they're, they're a little bit below. So, there's, there's capacity for this development in that school. As future properties, the 40 acres to the west develops, that'd have to be a consideration with the, the school district and potential boundary changes in the future with that. So, that's just some, some data I pulled from the school district. I didn't want to show up and not have any real data, real information, so that's, that was from the school district. In regard to traffic, I asked our city engineer Bryce Terry to put together some information regarding the proposed traffic impact that this would have. Of course, this development, if it goes to City Council and, and obtains approval in the future, it would be required to do a traffic impact study and do any mitigation to the road network signals and widening and, or, or things that would have to happen there to, to address the capacity. I can just preface this with, I, we've never had a school that the traffic works at. And I've talked to South Jordan, I've talked to Draper, I've talked to Riverton, and every city engineer and, and, and community development director in those cities has the same hassle. Pickup and drop-off times, you, you can't build enough lanes, you can't build enough signals, you can't build enough pickup area to make the traffic work for that 30 minutes. So, the, what, what we do is we, we deal with the pain and pickup and drop-off times and then the rest of the day, the roads typically work pretty well. But for the Sorrento development, there are two access points, as was shown on the exhibit, that would go out to 5600 West. Based on the traffic manual that engineers use to calculate traffic generation, Bryce was able to calculate that that would generate 576 new average daily trips. That's the metric they use for, I think each single-family home generates close to 10 trips per day, I think it's 9.6. So, 10 trips per day, that's going to the store, coming back home, taking a kid to school, coming back home, 10 of them. So, the projected volume for 5600 West is 9,000 ADT, and that's from our transportation master plan, including this 576. And the 576 is about 6.4% of that volume. The capacity for that road is 17,580. So, we're, it, if the 2050 build-out capacity for that road is about 51.4% of the, of the road capacity. You'll experience a little bit more congestion, obviously, during the peak hours of school to pick up and drop-off time and commuting time, and it'll be experienced intersections, generally not the main segments. Bryce didn't calculate that. But his, his analysis summarizes, is summarized with, "The proposed increase in traffic remains well within the 2025 roadway capacity of 17,500 ADT. The projected 2050 volume of 9,000 ADT does not pose a concern for congestion or operational efficiency along this segment of roadway." So, that was from the city engineer asking him to, to calculate the anticipated impact of this development on that specific road. The, the other discussions, let's see, we, I didn't have any other real notes. There, there was impact on home value. We haven't seen any where we're single-family homes, no matter the lot size, have impacted negatively home values next door. And then there's been a large push at the state legislature for homes to be built on a little bit smaller lots to, to bring affordability down. I think the average cost of a single-family home in Harriman is around $650,000. And so, anything we can do to bring that down to, to help people buy homes, we'll, we'll try to accomplish that, and the legislature's been, been pushing hard for that recently. So, that was all I had notes on.
I had, I had one for you that was discussed. What's, so we've got the two roads that are stubbing towards the west, what is the, the thoughts? Obviously, those, those roads are local roads, they're not collector roads, they're not meant to be carrying all of the development from neighboring, you know, but, but anyhow, maybe speak to that as well as the capacity of those, the widths, right? And, and what's the plan as development goes west?
So, 53 feet is the width, that's a 32-foot asphalt cross-section. That's required by fire code to allow parking on both sides. Where we've had wider roads, I can think of Hamilton Farms, where you'd have a similar density coming down through 60-foot wide roads is the next size up for a local road. When we've seen that, there, it gives enough width that we have speeding problems. And if you take the parking off the road, you end up with speeding problems too. If we do anticipate large vehicles like semi-trucks coming through with 53-foot trailers on them, we would need to, to look at no parking that street so that you could have the, the maneuverability.
That's not the plan, right, for those streets?
It's not the plan for that street right now. But I don't think any of our streets that we've no parked in some areas because of similar issues, wherever we're planned to be no parking, we address that as the issue comes up in the future. For capacity, a 53-foot wide road can, that, that width can, can carry an entire subdivision. We've seen subdivisions with 3, 400 lots built with 54, 53 and 60-foot wide roads. And so, yeah, that, there's, there's not a lot of concern with, with volume in and out of that. So, yeah.
The fact that we're stubbing those to the west, we're not, there's no plans, we don't know what it is, that's just looking to accommodate, is that?
Our city code requires that we don't landlock property. So, this require, this is actually a requirement in city code to provide a future access for a property that would otherwise be landlocked.
And on the 3 and 400 unit neighborhoods, how many access points are there?
There's a minimum requirement of two, and so, but there's usually more, and that's usually governed by the traffic impact study that would be done. So, what we've seen is usually when that road comes to an intersection like a 5600 West in this case, instead of just keeping in that narrow, that narrow, you might add a little bit of width, take the park strip out and add a, a turn lane, so you can have a left turn, a right turn and an end, so you can add some more maneuverability. Because that's usually where you see the congestion, is waiting to turn left onto a street.
In the public comment, there's some mention about multifamily housing being allowed. Is that currently part of this plan?
No. The, the next item, the master development agreement restricts that, so, yeah, it would, it would tie it to 113 single-family unit lots, so.
Zoning is called multifamily, right? R210 multifamily, but it's not.
No.
Yeah, it's just limited, it's the, like, like Blake was mentioning before, it's just a limitation in our zoning tools. We don't have anything to go from a 10,000 square foot lot down to anything smaller than that in single-family detached. R210 allows multifamily, but it also allows single-family, which is what is being proposed and what we're, with the zoning condition, what would restrict the, the development to. So, no, no, you don't want to get duplexes or anything like that, this will all be detached single-family.
We, I think we'd mentioned this at the Planning Commission, we had applied for a grant with, with Wasatch Front Regional Council to kind of right-size our zoning code and introduce some smaller zones, but we did not receive that. We were also waiting to see if the state legislature was going to make some new requirements relative to density within cities. That didn't happen this time, but it could happen in the future. So, yeah, we're, we're going to pick up that small lot zoning tool again, but again, we just, it's, we just don't have it right now.
So, the state legislature might force smaller lots anyway.
Can you explain a little bit about why it was selected to do the neighborhood residential two instead of neighborhood residential one?
I defer to planning on that one.
It, it's a factor of density again. There's a range that's associated with the neighborhood residential one that was not consistent with the density that they were requesting in the MDA.
And so, it was, it became because of the, the developer who wanted to come in?
Right. And along those same lines, just to clarify, you know, we just said that we were going to give a positive recommendation about neighborhood two for the general plan change. But within neighborhood residential two, you have R115, R110, R215 and R210, ranging from 2.9 dwelling units per acre to 8.0 dwelling units per acre. And I think the max, or the, the major difference between them, the R1s and the R2s is the size of, you know, the minimum lot size, correct? There's no minimum lot size for the R2s, but for R1s, R115, R110, sorry, because it's...
The R2s require a, a development agreement to identify that lot size, and so, it's a setback in the lot size in the R2, so, yeah.
Right, but there's, there's no minimum lot size on the R215, R210s. And so, my question is, I understand why they went with the neighborhood two, because the developer wanted higher density and the city wants to have that same kind of higher I guess this isn't really a question, so I'll let you go.
I don't know if I got the question out of that, so what specifically?
I don't know if there is a question. I, I just wanted to clarify.
He's talking it through in his brain, huh?
Yeah, it's all right. I'm just talking through, like, understanding. So, the neighborhood two ranges from 2.9 to 8.0, correct? Between the four different zones or zoning types?
From the general plan, yes.
The general plan, okay.
And I think we're six point, and we're sitting at 6.26 on this proposal is what I understood.
Right, which falls under R210.
That's right.
Any other questions? I think that was all that I saw on the, the notes as well.
I just wanted to ask if Blake would briefly speak on the purpose of these proposals, that it's a land swap for the athletic complex?
It's included in the overall lands swap, yes.
Right, I just think that might be something important for the public to hear.
The purpose of, of all these?
Why we're doing all these changes tonight and coming up, so maybe.
Yeah, just, so, there's, there's an item on the end of the agenda tonight that we are continuing to the next meeting because we didn't have all the information from the, the landowner, land reserve at the time of posting, so we had to hold off till the next meeting. So, that property, it was proposed to be a park, and then we were going to add property to that, to the west, to get this athletic complex at the time. The property to the west was actually at that time in Salt Lake County. After, after some negotiations and discussions, that property went to South Jordan, it was annexed into South Jordan. South Jordan did not want to participate with Harriman City on that park, so then we had to figure out if we wanted to make the park smaller or do something different. So, the, the proposal was to try to do a land swap to consolidate properties into one larger park for the purpose of being able to apply for outside funding from entities such as Salt Lake County or the state. The smaller property didn't allow us to do that. The larger park, or larger property will allow us to pursue funding opportunities that were previously not available to us. To do that, you have to come up with either cash or property to trade, and so that's where we're, we're at, is putting together a package so that we can consolidate this property into a larger park. The, the parcels that we had are the ones that we're discussing tonight, and, and they, that, that's where we're at. I don't know, was there anything else that you had questions on with, with that?
No, I just think maybe people weren't aware of why this property is going to be changing zoning and why it's going to be residential. It's all part of a larger.
Yeah.
Trade.
Yeah, the people that, the people that are here that maybe didn't come to the open house, that, that's definitely beneficial, and hopefully the open house shared that information too, but happy to, happy to say that all again, so, yeah, that's, that's the purpose behind it, and thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah.
And, uh, just one more clarification. So, this was originally thought to be like a public works building, is that correct? And the need that the, that the city had for that has changed, is, is that correct?
Yeah, so this area was going to be a combination of a public works yard, fire station, potentially a fire, or a police, police and fire station. We'd been kicking around municipal use ideas on this. There's a large water line, as was, as was discussed earlier, that runs up the, the road that's on the east side of this property. There's contaminated soil that's on the property that has to be cleaned up, that we've begun the plan on how to get that cleaned up and prepared for residential use. So, yeah, that, that original plan was a public works yard. And I think through analysis with the Public Works Department and the city manager, this, this location was deemed as, as not the best location to best service our parks and open spaces from here.
Thank you.
All right, we've held Blake a long time, but I'm sure he wouldn't mind any more questions from anyone. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Any discussion from the Planning Commission on this item? Thoughts? Concerns? Go ahead.
You know, I, I, I understand that the city wants to, obviously, they've already moved the fire station to outside this little piece, and it doesn't work for them as a public works, and so, that's why I, I went along with the neighborhood residential two, because I think that it is going to eventually be neighborhood residential two, but I'm concerned about the lot sizes. And I'm all for smaller sizes, but we have this problem where we just do all the same small sizes to pack in as many as we want, or as many as the developer can get into that space. And I think, I think that even with our positive recommendation to a neighborhood residential two, we have the opportunity to make it an R115, decapping it at 2.9 dwelling units per acre, which will more closely match the adjacent properties, both to the east, north, and, well, the west is pretty far away. The only properties that are close to the, I think that the, the size that we're discussing is Kitty Corner across from Rosecrest and 129, where you have the, the attached units over there. So, I, 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 I'm a little concerned just for this area that I think that we're kind of letting the, you know, the cart push the dog on this one.
Any other thoughts? Heather? Go ahead.
Yes. So, just thinking back to when we created this general plan, I was a part of it. And the intent of the agricultural and hillside residential was to preserve bigger lots that represent Harriman. And this is moving it to residential two where we do have that as the agricultural and hillside. I think that, that this piece probably would have been included in that had it not been for public use. So, for me, this is a, a difficult one to kind of work through because, like, what we had it zoned for, this is a big difference in, in lots. So, that's where my concern is. I kind of feel like, kind of what Forrest was saying, where there's probably some better options within that neighborhood one.
I think, I think I'm in agreement with Heather. It, it feels like, it seems like, and we rarely get this much public input, and... It feels like, it seems like, and we rarely get this much public input, and the input we have from the neighbors, the locals here, hasn't been very favorable for these small lots. I'm kind of thinking that maybe some more thought needs to be put into this and reconfigured to satisfy the public and still meet our codes and ordinances. I do look forward to the future when we have that smaller zone, but that's not today, so I understand the zoning issue. Any rate, my take is, I believe we may be a little premature, and this probably warrants a little more thought.
Any other comments? Thoughts, discussion?
Kind of back to one, and I'm torn as well, but going back to just the cost of the house, when we do go with the larger lots, which would make sense, all of a sudden we turn a $1 million house into three. And so, you know, maybe not three, maybe it's two, but I know that's something most people can't afford. So, do we end up, does that end up making it, leave it empty for who knows how long, and then all of a sudden we get, you know, the state legislature telling us $4,000 square foot lots is what we get? Do we end up with smaller lots, or even multifamily?
Based on states?
Based on where the state's at.
What the state requires.
I don't know. It's, that move that the legislature was making was very real. And for those who don't know, the state legis, the law that was proposed was to make any residential space 6,000 square feet if the developer wanted, regardless of what the city said. That was the state legislature looking to force that.
We also currently have obligations to meet certain moderate income housing requirements, and doing rezones like this qualify. We, in failing to achieve our moderate housing income, housing plan, it puts our transportation tax dollars at risk. So every year, we have to submit a report to the state showing them what we're doing towards achieving that goal and following our plan. So, like, again, something like this is consistent and helpful towards that end. So we have to be doing these types of things somewhere in our community.
It makes it 700 and 800,000 dollar houses instead of 2 million.
And there's certainly no obligation, or commitment, or indication from the city that this type of land use pattern would have to extend further into the block, the undeveloped portions.
And when I was saying buffer, when I was saying buffer earlier, it would be a transition from smaller to larger internal.
Yeah, and I think that's a very valid type of building pattern, is instead of doing the entire thing at, you know, 7,000 square foot, you know, square foot lots, you know, can we follow more traditional pattern of development where you have the banker's lots on the corners and kind of at the end vistas? You know, those larger lots, but then you have some smaller ones mixed in within it. I think that that'd be a very beneficial way to mix in that lower, not lower income, but moderate income, missing middle, you know, smaller size.
Right, they're so expensive.
Upper middle, yes, smaller sized lots with the larger lots, and not just doing an entire development all the same, you know, trying to just maximize the small lots.
And we did, I don't know that we made, mentioned this in the presentation, but if you look at the conceptual site plan, the indication is that larger lots would be adjacent to those existing homes on the perimeter of the site. So there's already an effort to try and reflect, obviously not as large, but there was an effort of thinking, like, how can we make this a little more compatible?
Yeah, you can kind of see that on the ends there, right, where they're right adjacent to existing.
It looks like the darker, yeah, the darker.
In discussing this layout with the developer, trying to determine how this would work out, what they tried to do was line up lot lines with the existing. So when the existing homes on the north or south would look out, they would see the same number of houses that are on that line. So if there's four houses on the north, there's four houses south of them. And then they did want to vary the lot size inside, so that you didn't just get the cookie cutter look going down the street, that you'd have a wider and a narrower and wider, and it was varied. They had a plan, but we didn't include it in this presentation that had a color code of the lots and which, what sizes they were, and so it varied them quite a bit. So, I'm glad you said that, because that was something that I think was important that we failed to mention here.
We also successfully negotiated a significant reduction on this property. Do you remember where we started on this, Blake?
I think we were around 212 in one of our early, 300 was the very first one. Forgot that one already. But, yeah, it worked down to, and there was a mix of multifamily and single family, and now it's 113 single family.
Single family, right.
Maybe...
Yeah, and that's because of the community input that we received.
One other thing I maybe want you to bring up, too, Blake, sorry. So it was brought up, the, there's some restrictions on this parcel, right, because of the water line, I think I heard that. With the water line going down, and we've, and this layout has that water line centered on that Eastern Mo Street, it really does, there's limitations on what you can do on lot size and stuff, just because of that, to get the water line accommodated, to be able to get the infrastructure in, the streets, and the layout and everything, this is pretty optimized, I guess is what I'm trying to get at. Correct me if I'm wrong, is this, you feel this is pretty optimized for the shape of the lot, the restrictions that are on there, to be able to go, I mean, I guess you could go maybe some wider lots to, but the street network and stuff that's set up here, and the reason for the local streets as well, is because of the limitations that are associated with this parcel, right?
Yeah, yeah, that water line locks that road location in, so those lots along 5600 West, that's where they're at. If you start messing around with the lot, with the roads, you end up with double-fronted lots, and those are more expensive to build, more expensive for the homeowner to buy. So, this is an optimized layout for this site, for single-family homes.
Which, I want to bring that up, because I'm kind of torn too. I like, obviously, we all like the larger lots.
Another issue we have is also the remediation. We have contaminated soils, which we would have left in place had this maintained, stayed as a...
Civic.
Yeah, our public yard, right, because it was essentially commercial. So this is going to allow us a way forward of getting it cleaned up.
Yeah, okay.
So that east road, that's fixed.
That east road's fixed.
The only variable then would be on the frontage lots, the road, the 5600 West lots, to give them extra width, but then that defeats the alignment for the lot lines, which, I don't know if that's a big deal or not, but...
Yeah, so I wanted to make sure that was clear with everybody, because I'm hearing you, and I'm torn all the, I got kids who are buying homes now, and they can't afford them, right?
Oh, they can't even afford them.
They can't afford them, you know, is this affordable for them? I don't know, maybe this...
Well, my kids can't afford this.
Yeah, exactly. We can't even afford this, so...
So, maybe back to the initial proposal, was that all townhouses, or...
There were condos, I think town, I think the initial...
Multi-story flats?
Mm-hmm, so, yeah, it was, it was pretty dense, and it utilized the road network very well, but had a lot of, a lot of homes that would have impacted the roads and things.
Now 300's quite a bit more.
Yeah. All right. Any other discussion? We can let Blake sit down again. Thank you, that was very good.
This is a reminder, I mean, obviously, in this creative way of trying to exchange property, and this is a key component to that athletic complex.
Yeah. The negotiations and stuff.
If you could redocken in this property rights, would be significant.
Yeah. And again, we make recommendations, we don't know what all has transpired in the discussions that have gone on with folks, but again, the ultimate decision, but I appreciate that.
No commitments have been made on behalf of the city, right? All of this is still up to decision by the city council. But all we're trying to do is prepare a proposal that the council can consider. And this is a key component.
Yeah, yeah, that's the intent. We take the public comment for the city council in these meetings, and then, so they can hear it and they understand it, and hopefully, we're making an educated recommendation to them as well, based on the information that we hear at these meetings from everyone involved. So, we appreciate what's been happening here, so...
So, Michael, whether we approve or deny, it still goes to the city council?
Yes.
Well, again, you're making a motion to recommend either approval, recommend approval with modification, or you could recommend denial, but it would still go to the city council, right?
Correct.
And that meeting is what date, April 23rd?
Tentatively planned for the 23rd, three weeks from today, tentatively.
Which, thank goodness, is not spring break.
Yeah, and I don't think that was the intent, you know, to have this on spring break, it just fell that way. I don't know, the way things are planned is, you've just got to do business, and you got, sometimes it works out that way, so... Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion for approval, denial, or approval with other recommendations, or however we want to go forward with this.
I'll make a motion to recommend denial to the city council of item 4.3.
Okay, we have a motion by Forrest.
I'll second.
And we have a second by Heather. So this is a recommendation for denial, so if you vote in favor, you are voting in favor of the denial. If you vote against, you're voting against the denial. So I just want to make sure that that is clear as we move forward. So we have a motion and a second, and we'll do a roll call vote. Forrest?
Yes.
Jackson?
No.
Heather?
Yes.
Tara?
No.
Daryl?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
So that is afforded to recommendation for denial to the city council on that particular item of 4.4. All right. With that, we'll move on to item 4.5. Again, this is a continuation of this discussion on the Sorento Master, this is for the Sorento Master Development Agreement. And I think we have received all of the discussion from staff. I don't know, Ryan, you have an opportunity, if you want to discuss any more on the, this is on the Master Development Agreement. Is there any additional information you want to provide as the applicant, because you are the applicant, before we go to public hearing?
No, I can do that.
Okay, if there's any comments, we'll let you come up and do that. So again, there is a consideration, a recommendation brought before us to date for a Master Development Agreement for this parcel as well. So at this time, we will accept public, I'll open up the public comment and the public hearing for comments on the Master Development Agreement for the Sorento Development. Yeah, yeah, and, sorry, before you begin, just, there's a lot of conversations, it is kind of hard for us to hear, so try and keep the internal conversations to a minimum, so we can focus here on what's being said. Thank you, go ahead.
I have a few things, or Marie...
Your name again, please, sorry.
Yeah, Marie Pastana.
Thank you.
I've been working with the mayor a lot, and meeting with city council, and we've become quite familiar with each other. And one of the things that they have almost assured me of was that there would be a wall around the entire development, not just along 5600. So, I think that that was part of the reason that I was willing to give a little bit more on it, because I do have animals, I do have those large animal rights, and having that high density right next to them is a concern with just a vinyl fence. Another thing is, I don't know if you guys realize how many rodents live in that field, but something to consider as it's being developed. There's a lot of gophers, there's a lot of voles, there's a lot of mice, we're constantly fighting them right there, so it is going to be extra awesome. And then with the remediation, I know that the land needs to be cleaned up. I live right there with my kids, and as they're cleaning it up, what protections will be in place to make sure that the contaminations don't come and visit me? Those are my comments.
Thank you, Marie.
Again, Land of Visser. So, my first question is, who's paying for the contamination cleanup? And I hope one of you asked that question in your guys' discussion, and we can get a good answer on that. Is that the city, is that the developer, combination of both? Number two is going to be a little statement by me. So, just, one, I applaud what you guys did in your last vote, shutting that down and making it bigger lots and all that, but we still have the problem of too many lots, we need to find a way, a solution for that, but it's just putting a strain on our classrooms, our commute times, the demand for public services, and now with nowhere extra for things to spread, and a new community yard, there's, how are we going to provide those extra services for people? These are just things that need to be, I don't know, looked at. Also, while impact fees are collected to help fund infrastructure improvements and associated by the new development, these fees often fall short of covering the full cost, leaving existing residents to bear the financial burden, and personally, I don't want to be in charge of that, because I am a taxpaying citizen. So, just two more comments. Recently, not just on this development, but on all developments, I'm just wondering why Harriman has to be the high-density housing capital of the South Valley. Riverton just built a park, or approved to build a park, and then we're talking about more housing. So I'm just questioning that, and I know that athletic complex, but the athletic complex that was mentioned before also is not free to use for all residents, and they don't know if it's going to be public or private ownership, nor if it will be built at all, and when that will be. So that's a few of my concerns there. And then my last question, or my last kind of advice slash, what I want you guys to look at, is I want you guys to listen to your constituency, you guys represent them, and besides the city develop, the city and the developer tonight, I don't think anybody was in agreeance with either of these 4.3, 4.4, 4.5 legislative items. Thank you guys for your time.
It's a long walk for you, huh? Appreciate it.
Here I am again.
Your name again.
My name's Chance Gladhill.
You're Chance.
I live on 5835 West. Just got thinking, Corinne Jones back here said something about spring break. I was wondering, where is everybody? Because, I mean, all my neighbors, everyone I talk to is against this, but no one's here. So I just want to reemphasize that we're against this.
Thank you, Chance. Any other comments? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Have a motion by Heather?
Second.
Second by Forrest, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we go ahead and close the public hearing. Ryan, maybe come up, there's a couple of questions maybe you could answer regarding payment for contamination, maybe the city needs to answer that one, the wall around the property, and some different things like that that was discussed, so...
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Can we maybe bring the site plan up? I'm not sure if you're just running the show on that.
We're not either. Mitch does a great job, thank you.
Right now, as far as what the development would be doing, there'd be a precast wall along 5600 West, that's the extent. I cannot speak for what the fire station would be doing, I would imagine that they're going to have a precast wall around the fire station itself.
Yeah, they do, they do have, yes.
I think that actually already came before the Planning Commission.
Correct, and that is correct, that does have a wall.
So that's got that, and then as staff mentioned earlier, their desire was to maybe not have a precast wall around the open space. So, yeah, that's the extent of as far as what the development agreement contemplates, is just, as far as this development, again, not the fire station and what it's doing, but ours is just to be along 5600 West. As far as the contamination goes, the plan right now is that I'll be paying for the cleanup, the remediation of the property. We'll be using a public infrastructure district on this property that will then hopefully be able to reimburse us for at least a portion of the remediation costs. So, none of the taxpayers here would be paying for that. Again, it would be me, and then to the extent that there's funds available to reimburse, then in reality, the homeowners, the future homeowners on this specific piece only would be the ones paying that.
They're a part of the pit, and they would be the ones...
They'd be part of the pit, and their property taxes would be the ones paying for that. So again, the people living there would be the ones paying for the cleanup, or at least a portion of it, but not the general public. And that's been... And that's been a change and an evolution that's been kind of one of these last-minute negotiations. The city all along has been obligated to cover that cost because it's their property and, and whatnot, and so that's been something that we've had to work together on to figure out some solutions, the creative solutions, because there's obviously a lot of moving parts and pieces to this. We're looking at obviously one piece right now of something much bigger, and so, yeah. Whether any other, happy to answer any other questions, I'm not sure if there's something else.
Yeah, let's see if anybody else has them. Yeah, go ahead, Tara.
I do, I haven't observed a remediation process before. Is that something that stays contained on the property that you're working with?
Yes, initially, but then you have to eventually haul it off.
Sure.
So, yeah, so it's, you have to clean it up, and then depending on what it is and to the extent, then sometimes it can stay on site, maybe it stays under roads, and some of it, depending on the levels of contamination, or they call it now impacted soils is the new, the new term.
And those impacted soils, there is certain requirements when they are being manipulated, I guess, on site or whatever, being excavated or whatever, to maintain, there's dust control and different things like that, so adjacent properties certainly not being impacted.
I believe Blake mentioned in our work session, the level of cleanup, could you restate that, please?
So we'll have to do a full cleanup plan on the property that has to go through a bunch of layers, it's, that's not really a Harriman issue, it's the EPA, it's the Utah Department of Environmental Quality, so DEQ, there's, there's, it's basically governed by the state and the federal government, the cleanup standards, and it all originated, I won't say where, from somewhere out west. And there's just been ditches and stuff historically, flood irrigated properties here where the, where it has come from, so.
So the public that, that eventually will buy into these, the surrounding neighbors, they can have some assurance that what you're going to do is safe and it's not going to cause them any problems?
Yeah, like I said, it has, like, this is a massive government oversight situation, and the current bid that the city has is about $2.8 million to clean that up. So, yeah, if we were to remove lots, then the city, if we were going to move forward with this, the city will then have to cover that cleanup cost, there's not. The PID, these homeowners, these number of lots, they won't generate enough money, so, so that's the exchange. So I realize you've already recommended against the zoning, I wish I could have stood up and maybe made a couple of points, but it is a trade-off. If we want to, you know, get the park, yeah.
Yeah.
You're kind of trading some, you've got some options there, I guess, so.
Then I have a question about the open house, I don't know if that'd be best for you or for Blake?
Yeah, I didn't put on the open house, that was done by the city, so.
Any other, yeah, no, any other questions for Ryan before we let him sit down? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. We'll ask Blake to come up again. Thank you. We'll get your steps in tonight, too.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I was wondering if you could tell us about the attendance at the open house and the sentiments that you heard there, what it was like. I know it does take a lot of effort to come to a public meeting, but have you gotten any sense of, I don't know, of other responses about this project?
So this project specifically had the highest attendance out of all of the open houses for these projects. I think there were 40? I can't remember the number of attendees, it was like, it was around 40, 42 or 39, somewhere in there.
Roughly.
And in general, remember the proposal, proposal at that time had a lot more housing units, and so it was not well-received. And so after that meeting, I think, like I'd said earlier, there were some follow-up meetings with several of the residents, we'd received a few phone calls here and there. So, yeah, that's, that's the extent of our coordination with residents in the area. Were there any other questions besides that on it, or?
No, I, I guess I was just, I appreciate everyone coming and voicing their opinion, and I also think there's a silent majority that, that doesn't come out and is, might be supportive of the project, too. So I was curious if you heard anything on the other side of, of it, but perhaps not than it sounds like.
No, usually positive comments, we don't get those, we only hear the negative ones, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Maybe, while you're here, I got a question for you, and maybe planning staff can help as well. How do, how does Harriman City compare in their multifamily versus other communities around the area here? I, personally, I think we're comparable, I know that some, some people may feel differently, but.
Michael can speak to the percentage in our plan and.
But there are requirements, again, that the state has for us, and, you know.
There is a perception.
There is a perception out there that we are the high-density capital of, you know, so anyhow.
So I've been on staff for seven years.
Yeah.
And, and I know that a number of our previous development agreements would allow attached housing, that was pretty common. But since I've been here, for the most part, most of our agreements have been really encouraging, just like in this project, detached, single-family.
All right.
Now, we know that, for example, in Olympia, we do have attached housing in that project.
Thank you, Southland County.
And there will be some in some of these other MDA amendments that we did on this, in the South Hills. But again, we pushed largely for single-family detached. You may recall, like, in the South Hills amended MDA, they came up with that new small lot, single-family detached product, versus they could have, under their old agreement, executed a number of attached housing. So overall, we have really been driving detached product for the last several years primarily in all of these projects.
And I just heard where our single-family amount is 60%.
Which I think is very comparable to.
Yeah.
The Southwest and even other communities. We're not doing anything out of the ordinary, or, so, okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Just curious, though, is that number including the entitlements?
That's, that's, that's existing, right?
Okay.
Existing, so, yeah. I, I know that our analyst, Trevor, I don't know if you had the pleasure of meeting him yet, but he's ran a lot of those numbers, and he provides a report, I think it's monthly to the city council, and so we can, we can get those numbers for the future.
No, that's fine, I think that's enough said, it is, sometimes some comments are made, I just want to make sure people are aware that.
Yeah.
We're not out of the ordinary, we're not, we're right there where we need to be based on state legislative requirements and, and other things, so we're right there where we need to be, so.
I did want to clarify one thing a little bit on the contaminated soil cleanup. So when we do cleanups in the city, we have our own consultant that goes out and monitors the site. Our last large cleanup we did was part of the Miller Crossing subdivision, and when they did that, they set up air monitoring stations on critical locations next to existing residential, they monitored that air, they keep the dust down. All trucks coming and leaving the site have to spray their wheels off and clean before they come and go. The contamination is arsenic and lead, the arsenic wasn't as prevalent, there was a lot of lead on the site, and so that's, that's some background on that, but we, we monitor that pretty closely to make sure there's, there's not contaminants getting in the air, and, and we will be, do our best, we'll probably have a hotline right to that environmental consultant, so if, if the residents see something, they can hop on it right away.
Perfect. Any other questions for Blake? Okay, thank you. All right. Any discussion? I thought, you know, good discussion, I learned a little bit more under that one as well in regards to land swaps and paying for things moving forward, and how this all needs to come together to make the, the whole, whole, I guess, so.
I was just anticipating a motion from the commission, if you felt like you wanted to maybe make some recommendation, whether it's a positive or a negative recommendation, maybe give some, some feedback or some guidance, what are your concerns, what are your interests as this item moves from the commission to the council?
Correct, yeah, this is, again, for the master development agreement for this, this 18-acre site.
So I feel that, like, looking at the actual MDA itself, there are a few key areas where, since we are recommending denial of the, our 210, that some language need to, would need to be adapted in the MDA to accommodate, accommodate that, and so it feels a little contradictory to, to approve this with the numbers and the lots, and, and in the MDA it says, as this site plan is, is presented, that'd be part of the MDA. I feel it'd be a little disingenuous, at least for me to, to go forward with approval for that, because that's not what we, that's not what I, I think that it needs to be.
Okay. Mitch, would you mind going forward one slide? Because I think that has, maybe it was one more. So that was the, I thought there was one more that had a bunch of other, nope, never mind, okay, that's it, thank you. Okay, so here you go.
I just had to say, I appreciate the works that's been done to decrease the density from the original proposal, and also all the work that this city is doing to help have great facilities in our city instead of us traveling further away for amenities, and those things take a lot of work, and it's still in process, but I appreciate all the works that, that's being done, and I think this looks better than where it started, and a better fit for our community than it could have been, so.
Yeah, I agree with you on that one.
Yeah. So again.
I agree with that, too, that they've done a good job in minimizing it, I just feel like there could be another step, so.
Well, and we can, and as Michael said, I mean, if you feel like there are some things that need to be adjusted, we could still go forward with a positive recommendation with additional conditions of, of that as well, if, if that's the way we want to go about it, you know, if we're in general agreement with the MDA, except for maybe as, as was mentioned, the zoning or the, the number of lots, I mean, we can, we can still have a favorable recommendation for this one, if, I'm, I'm just saying, that's, that's an option as well.
There's a recommendation.
Yeah, if, yeah, we can, we don't have to carte blanche, just say, no, we shouldn't agree with this because it's, it goes against what we just, the motion we just had. We can have, still have a positive recommendation here with some addendums or conditions that we would like to have as well. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, too.
Well, and one thing I do like about it, or especially like about it, is the alignment of lots. That's a good, a good piece.
On, with the existing lots.
The existing lots.
Absolutely, yeah. Agreed. And there is a certain number of lots that are required, I guess, to make it viable, with, with the 2-point-whatever-million cleanup that has to be done on the site as well, that is a.
Maybe there's a little more mixing of the sizes of lots, so there's bigger lots on the ends, maybe they get a little smaller in the middle.
Maybe, yeah.
That might be.
Any other discussion? Do I have a, a motion?
I'm kind of thinking about how that might work.
How to phrase it?
Yeah, that we, that we like the MDA, but maybe there's a way to arrange the lots a little better.
Yeah.
It's got a lot of restrictions, which makes it hard, and we can't design it.
Yeah. Again, these are recommendations, and, and, yeah, we've, we've come this far, there's no reason why maybe we can't make some additional adjustments based on our recommendations as well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would it be out of line to, to go with the original motion and then advise the city council to keep working on reconciling the two motions?
Sure. Absolutely, you could phrase it.
Would it be in line or out line?
No, 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 you could certainly do that.
That's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do like the idea that this development is driving the cleanup of those contaminated soils, which does protect the public, so, I mean, there, there is a positive that comes out of this.
And I wonder if, it's hypothetical, but if we'd known that situation, like you said, would that have changed maybe some of our thoughts on the previous, nonetheless, I won't go there, but, but nonetheless.
If it was public works.
Keep that in mind as we make this one.
If it was public works.
If it was public works.
It would have stayed in place.
It would have stayed in place, absolutely. Yeah. Yep, exactly. So, yeah, if it was public works, we wouldn't have to do the remediation that would need to be done for this, so. But yes, Tara, I think that is an appropriate motion, if, if we want to do it that way.
Sounds like you're making a motion.
Okay, can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to city council of item 4.5 with the conditions of approval, staff's conditions of approval.
And an additional, if you want to.
Let's see. To approve the Sorrento Master Development Agreement for 18.05 acres of property, do I need to read this whole thing?
No, no.
Okay. I guess the part I want to emphasize is to facilitate the development of approximately 113 single-family detached dwellings, and to have that number be part of the recommendation.
Maybe a better mix of lot sizes.
And include a, the, the city council consider a better recommend, or more variety in the lot sizes. How's that for a messy motion?
I think that works.
It works.
Angela, you good with that? I'll make it. I think, I think we all understand.
I'll, I'll second.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Tara and a second by Daryl, we'll do a roll call vote for this, and we'll begin with Andrea. Again, this is a recommendation for approval with staff's recommendations and those conditions for modifying lot sizes, looking for opportunities to modify lot sizes as well, and work, I think you also wanted to work within the previous motion of the.
Yes.
Right, you wanted to include that, yes.
Do you want me to do it again?
Yeah, let's do it again, let's do it again.
Let's try this again.
Let's try it again.
Let's raise my ear louder. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to the city council of item 4.5, and include staff's recommendations of conditions of approval, to also include this approximately 113 single-family detached dwellings as part of the recommendation, and that the city council consider having a variety of lot sizes, and.
And reconcile with the motion on.
And work to reconcile.
Zoning?
The zoning, the zoning recommendation in 4.4.
The zoning recommendation in item 4.4.
I think that works, okay.
Okay.
There you go.
My second stands.
So we have a motion by, by Tara and a second by Daryl. All right, excuse me, it's good to get to write these names, I know you all, but we get in these meetings. We'll go for a roll call vote, Andrea.
So not the, not the number of lots, just the lot sizes is what we're worried about?
She said to.
Said 113.
She said 113 lots, and also to, but to work with the motion that was, the recommendation that was made on item 4.4, which was, we said a denial on those, recommended denial on the zoning, so.
No.
Okay. We can, we can, we can do that. It's, it's to work with the city council, so the motion's been made, we're leaving it at that.
So no, sorry.
No, okay. Daryl?
Sorry, what?
Your vote, yes or no?
Yeah. We're to that, we're to that part now?
Yes.
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
All right, Heather?
No.
Jackson?
Yes.
Forrest?
No.
That's 3-3. So I throw the vote, and I, I vote yes for that one as well. So that'll be a 3, that'll be a 3, oh, now, as that motion does move forward as a recommendation to city council, the motion included a discussion to reconcile the motion that was previously made of 4.4, which was a denial of the zoning, so it can, it means it's up to the city council is what it means. Okay, we're done with the public hearing on this one, we will move forward. All right, so that is all of the items for the Sorrento Master Development Agreement, or Sorrento Development. We'll move forward to item 4.6, which is a discussion of the Olympia. We'll move forward to item 4.6, which is a discussion of the Olympia master development agreement. Sheldon?
All right. So this is another component here of the negotiations for the Southwest Athletic Complex. This amendment here involves Olympia, it's obviously located in the southwest corner of the city. As I mentioned, it's part of the southwest, this is part of the negotiations with the Southwest Athletic Complex. As mentioned previously, we had three community open houses regarding this proposal, and then we noticed residents surrounding Olympia Development on March 21st. Again, this is just a quick overview of the Olympia Development. It's 931 acres, carries a zoning designation of LPMPC, which is the Large Project Master Plan Community, and they were entitled to 3660, 3,660 units. So they're proposing four amendments to the existing MDA here with Olympia. One of those amendments would remove the requirements that are related to the development and expansion of the K Park. The K Park is actually, it's a park located in Hidden Oaks in Pod 14. Per the original approval of the MDA, the developer is obligated to expand that park by seven acres and provide some additional financing for that improvement. This amendment would remove that requirement from the master developer. Again, here, that's the section here in Olympia, and here's kind of a general overview, to give you a general idea of where that park's located. Where you see the red circle, the lower section there, it's green, that's the K Park. The upper section is the Olympia, and that section, which is kind of notice 25, that would be the seven acres, which would be removed from, well, removing those obligations from the developer to improve. The second amendment, again, impacts the open space obligations of this development. Now, it doesn't reduce their, well, the way it's written, it's, they're still have to maintain the 20% open space requirement per this development, but due to the, I guess the discussions they had, that seven acres that was proposed for that, for the K Park expansion, that would be, that seven acres would be removed from that, from that 20% open space obligation. So basically, if you look at the, you know, the entire development, 930 acres, 20% of that's about 180 so acres, so that'd give you a reduction of about 3% in overall open space. That amendment, too, does not restrict how that seven acres is utilized, so it could be utilized as, you know, residential development, as of now, that the developer is actually proposing to develop that under a neighborhood designation for their land use, their land use plan, which allows four to eight units per acre. The second amendment would increase the overall density of the project by 150 units. Again, they're originally entitled to 6,330, that would increase that overall unit count to 6,480. That would bring the overall density about 6.9 units per acre. Again, there was no restrictions on, you know, where they disperse those units to, or the housing type. The fourth and final amendment is to remove the obligations for any obligations the developer may have to pay a portion of any impacts to off-site infrastructure that may be created from the Olympia Development. Again, the MDA now just states that, you know, that if any impacts are generated from the Olympia Development, that impact off-site public infrastructure, it would be the responsibility of both the city and the developer to resolve those issues. Again, that's something that they're removing. Again, I think Blake can probably speak a little better to that, on those requirements. That being said, you know, looking through what they've recommended, you know, zoning and engineering had no concerns with the proposal. You guys have any questions for me? I'll do my best to answer them. Ryan's here as well to answer your questions.
Thank you, Sheldon. Any questions for Sheldon? This one. Okay. Thank you. Ryan, is there anything more you'd like to present to us today? By all means, we appreciate you being here all night with us.
Yeah, no problem. Again, this is part of this big trade, so the deletion of our portion of the K Park is an effort, obviously, to consolidate open space into this regional complex, or regional park, I'll call it. And so that was a piece of property that the city, we would dedicate it to the city, and they were going to develop it in the future. And so rather than the city divert funds in the future to develop that park there, again, I don't want to speak for the city, they can, anyway, that's why we're getting rid of it. We're consolidating it, moving it to this one larger contiguous location where the city can obviously then work to accomplish something more regional versus more of a local park, so. It's not a deletion of open space, it's a shift of it effectively, is what's happening there.
Yeah, good. Thank you for that clarification. Any questions for Ryan? Good. Appreciate you working with us tonight. And not just tonight, but as long as you have been working with us, so. All right, I need to, oh, excuse me, this is a, this is a public hearing as well, so. Correct? Yes. All right, sorry. So with that, I will go ahead, this is open for a public hearing. Again, this is the discussion for the amendments to the Olympia Master Development Agreement. That's what the hearing will be on at this time, so at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for any comments. Seeing done, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion by Heather?
I'll second.
A second by Jackson. All in favor? Aye? All right, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on this? Forrest, you had some in the work session, have you, your questions and stuff? I don't know if you had any discussion to bring up here?
Yeah, I have some questions, comments, whatever. So I'm not sure why the city would be removing the proportionate share of off-site impacts paid by the master developer. Seems to be unaffiliated with the, with the seven acre removal of the park.
Yeah, that's a really good question. So in our coordination with the developer, Commissioner Haupal said a minute ago, we've been working a lot with the developer on projects. We've been working for several years with them on funding for several other projects. We recently received $2.9 million because of their work and assistance on the bridge for 6,400 West that we would have otherwise been responsible to pay for in our Creek Ridge Development Agreement. We also received about $14 million in funding, and a large portion of that, probably about eight or nine million, to construct 7,300 West from Main Street all the way to 126, but the piece from outside of Olympia that was part of Hidden Oaks was a requirement for the city to pay for, so it's about eight or nine million dollars of that money. So it's been in discussions that, with those good faith efforts and them helping us get funding to release those obligations, that we would not require those obligations to be paid for on their, on their off-site impacts. Additionally, the 12600 South is going to be jurisdictionally transferred to UDOT once the U-111 project and the Harriman Boulevard project are completed. And so when that jurisdiction occurs, or that jurisdictional transfer occurs, then UDOT will be responsible for those future improvements, and the city wouldn't have been able, wouldn't be paying for them, and neither would the developer at that time. If UDOT wants to coordinate with the developer and go get those funds at that time, then they'll need to, but, and that was the majority of those improvements, was a long 126th, so. That answer your question?
Yeah.
In the MDA, though, doesn't it specifically call out 6,400 West? Under the improvements?
64th was part of the Creek Ridge Development, and we, the city, when the city council at that time, which was made up of entirely different council members than it's currently on there, the agreement was that the city would be responsible to pay for not only the roadway, but the precast wall along that road, and so, yeah, this, this will, the bridge was included in that, which was a large cost of it, so, yeah, we were required to be on the hook to pay for that.
But to answer your question, yes, it's 5.5 improvement of 6,400 West.
Or, oh, this was the other 6,400.
This is, yeah, this is in the MDA.
This is the one that's built south of Harriman Boulevard. I'm talking about the north of Harriman, so, yeah, the south of Harriman Boulevard that's already completed, that was part of that.
Well, Blake, just to clarify, there's not a land swap on this one, it's just the park, open space, and 150 units, right?
It's all part of the consideration package in the land swap, so, as we spoke about, like, the seven acre K Park expansion is, took that land and consolidated it over into this other piece, so there's not specific land outside of that, but it's part of the consideration for that swap in that agreement.
Thank you.
For the, for the K Park that's currently there, will the residences of this Olympia Hills have access to that, or will that be separated by a fence because it's a totally different development?
Where this will be, it's hard to tell right now, that park will be part of the Hidden Oaks development, it'll be a public park, you'll be able to access walking down 7,300 West and enter the park that way. Along the park, I would imagine there'll be homes, and they'll likely be fenced off, but they could maybe have a gate into the park or something, but there'll be access off of the road by pedestrians and by vehicles.
And that goes to my second point, is will it still maintain the half-mile radius to park space for all residences within Olympia Hills? If you eliminate that park, that whole side there doesn't have the park anymore, so will it still have the access to the?
So, yeah, I reviewed the, where that half-mile radius was at, it's in the design guidelines, and that condition requirement's not being removed from the agreement with this amendment, so they'll still be required to have a half-mile access to a park or open space item, so that will not be removed.
Yeah, it's letter F of recitals, right in the beginning of the MDA, so.
Yeah, there's no amendment proposed on that, right? That's there?
No.
Okay, good.
And then the last question, sorry.
No apologies. This is good.
So you mentioned that the seven acres that we're removing from park space won't be added to the overall for the 20% open space that's kind of being subtracted from And that works in one direction, but if you're adding houses in that area, doesn't that decrease the 20% over the entire development?
If they were at 20%, most likely what we've seen is where you have the creeks and hillsides, most of these developments are above 20, so they have a buffer to get rid of, so we'll hit 20% at the end of the day, but right now, we're still early on in the developments, so they'll be adding on as we go.
Yeah. What I don't want to see is, as the development grows and we start, you know, approving different pieces, we get to the end, and there's a huge demand for open space, but then it doesn't make fiscal sense for the developer to do that. We've had that discussion before in the past, and I don't want to see that happen again. Olympia Hills is such a hot topic as it is, you know, that we annexed it because we had to, and so I just want to make sure that we're sticking by the MDA that, you know, that we signed up for.
And I think, Clint, are you reviewing development reports as developments are coming in for this development to keep track of those?
Yeah, we have a shared, we have a shared document between Ryan's group and us, well, and sign engineering, that we'll go in and update for every development that comes in. We keep, we're tracking the number of single-family detached, open space, and all of that as it moves through the process to make sure that we're not out of alignment.
Sure.
Great. That's our mechanism for making sure we don't get way out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Have we heard anything about the university coming? Are they still planning on building?
No.
No. Just the one down south and...
No, that was dropped before they actually...
I think even before the annexation.
Yeah.
Yep. We have a lot of roads coming, that development has, all the key major roads are funded or working to get funded, and if you haven't been out driving through it, and go drive through it, we've always been asked to build the roads and infrastructure before the houses and never have done it until now, and so it's pretty impressive to go out there and see these big roads cutting through the field and seeing how things are laying out.
Any other discussion or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, again, this is, the motion tonight will be either a recommendation or denial of recommendation for city council, the amendments to the Olympia Master Development Agreement.
I think one interesting point that you brought up, Forrest, was the access to the existing K Park.
Yeah.
If we can, maybe we require that that access be maintained.
That'd be valuable.
Even if they still do the 20%.
Right.
Yeah, you got a nice little facility there, so have them work with the development as they develop their parcel now to be able to provide ease of access to that.
Pedestrian access.
Pedestrian access, thank you, yeah.
So they put a path.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, something to connect it, so. That's, definitely can be added as a recommendation.
I also have a question maybe for Matt, if he has any concerns of us removing the off-site improvements. Like, is there things that could come up that we aren't anticipating now?
Can I ask staff one quick question?
What do you mean?
How many units is Olympia currently entitled to?
Total units? Okay. We phoned a friend.
That was, that was the original entitlement. We haven't changed it up to this point, so that's where it's at.
That's not changing.
This is proposing to change it a little bit.
To what? 6,480?
What was it? It was in one of the earlier slides. 6,480, and it's essentially adding the density to that seven acres that's going out.
Right.
Oh, it's right there, it's in the motion, or in the adding 150.
But it'll be a beautiful park, right?
It's gonna be a beautiful park.
Yeah, but that's not what we're voting on. We're not voting on the beautiful park, because the beautiful park isn't even, it's in the works.
The motion tonight is on the, yes, the MDA amendment.
Correct.
Which is all feeding in, but yes.
But it is about the beautiful park, because this is sending the resources over to the beautiful park.
It's about, but it's not, even the park itself isn't finalized, and so, you know, we could, we could easily change the MDA and that park not even come to fruition, and then you've lost the park space to both areas.
Well, if you make this MDA, if all this comes to fruition and the property is sitting there, I think it's been mentioned to us before, that is a valuable piece of property.
Yeah, but the county has to give you funds to...
Yes, but it could still be, there's other options. You're right. If all that falls through, there's still value in doing this if something happens, for sure.
Right, right.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because I'm assuming Parks isn't willing to create a recreational...
Maybe.
Sports, sports park with our budget and how...
Possibly.
We can't afford to do other parks, I'm assuming we can't do a large...
That's why we're going through a Parks Master Plan right now, so, update. So, yeah. No, I think what's happening is, personally, I appreciate what's going on. I know there's concessions, things going back and forth, but everybody here is trying to do what's best for the community as a whole.
No, I agree.
For sure.
I agree, and it'd be great if it all went perfectly and how they have it planned, but it's planned, it's not, not final.
But it won't happen without this, but it won't happen without this process.
Can I get Blake to walk somewhere tonight?
Sure.
Let me be back to the question on pedestrian access to K Park without, can that, what are the implications there?
It's just hard to tell without the plan.
Basically, I notice some consternation from people behind you there.
It's just hard to tell without the plan, where things could go, how things, I know there's going to be transmission power line, most likely, along the west side of 7,300 West that's constructed. That'll have approximately a 40, 50-foot wide easement with it. That's where we're planning on putting a trail running along 7,300 West, so there'll be... So, there'll be about... We're planning on an eight-foot-wide asphalt trail to run along 7300 West. That trail's gonna tie in all the way along our Midas Creek Trail, up along that, and take everyone up Butterfield Creek, up to the trailhead for the Salt Lake County mountain bike area, and then all the way up to Butterfield Creek.
And it ties into K Park?
And that ties into K Park. So, we have this master trail plan over there to get people through there. As that subdivision comes in in the future, well, planning always encourages pedestrian access into parks. If you get more than a couple hundred feet from 7300 West, there's most likely going to be an access requested to be put into there to go in so people don't have to go out of the subdivision two, 300 feet, and then 200 feet back in. So, that'll be something that is just part of the design review process that we always do anyway.
Yeah, I think it's fine to put in a recommendation that they really consider and try and make some connections and tie-ins. I don't think that's out of line. You know, as we're going through the process, looking through this, and as they're developing it, I think they'd want that anyway. That's gonna make their properties more valuable, too, that they're trying to sell if they have a nice connection to the park. So, I think, by all means, yeah. Make that... If that's important to you, by all means, that can be a part of the motion. I don't think that's an issue at all. Yeah?
Yeah, it's something we always consider, so.
Anyway, yeah. But if we want to codify it, go ahead, yeah.
It's hard to tell where it will go someday because it's so far in the future.
Yeah, I mean, we're... Yeah. Very fair.
I feel like there's been a lot of changes since we originally went through kind of the beginning, I guess, of this MDA, which we didn't have a huge say on. A lot of it was already decided on before it came to us. And amongst the changes were commercial, the school. And I feel like the MDA was put together with the idea of having the open space and that cap on the units. And for me, it's a little bit hard to see that we're continuing to increase units in that area.
And I guess for me, it's a part of the... There's costs and everything that we're trying to do here, and so this is a way to...
It's a bigger picture issue.
Yeah, it's a bigger picture. I agree. You know, we'd all like to have our larger lots and, you know, all the parks in the world and all the open space and stuff, but they're... Just kind of like what you listen to, there's certain property rights that are out there and certain things that we've got to do to make sure that we're looking at the city as a whole on what's best for the entire community as well.
Well, when this was going through, you know, the whole MDA and the plan, you know, there was this talk that there's gonna be a huge park just north of this here. Now, that obviously has changed, just like everything changes.
Yeah.
But are we... Are we robbing Peter to pay Paul?
Well, that big park is moving to the east because of the annexation that happened, right? So, unfortunately, unfortunately, yeah.
I think that's a good phrase for it.
I know.
Yeah, right. That's just it.
Ideally, yeah.
The best plans are...
That park would've still been there, and, you know, we'd have to deal with it, but no, you know, South Jordan annexed everything over there. And we'll change things.
Yeah, unfortunately, things change, so we have to adapt.
Yeah, but 3% is still quite a bit, in my opinion, with this development. Obviously, I'll acknowledge the trade-off is amazing, right? But how is that going to impact the people who were kind of sold on this vision and this plan? And now, we've completely changed so many different parts of this.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong. Is this the First Amendment to the MDA? I mean, how many... We had the original MDA. Maybe I'm misspoken here.
This is the third.
The third, okay.
So, yeah, we had some commercial changes because when the roads were getting laid out, things became more clear as UDOT was fixing their alignments that we were able to change the commercial requirement and push to get three quarters... There are three corners of the intersection, and it was part of that South Jordan annexation. We never cared before how that laid out, but then we noticed that we were gonna lose two corners of that intersection, so we changed and moved things so that we could have a better commercial presence there. And so, yeah.
But I think this was originally sold as like, you're going to live here, you're gonna work here, you're gonna play here. And I don't see that happening.
And we're still early in the project. There's a lot of stuff to see still. With the Harriman Boulevard extension, the commercial center coming in, we're just barely getting into the beginnings of discussing how that's gonna lay out and look, and that's gonna create the jobs center. We have those three corners on U-111 and 7300 West that will turn into a large center for employment and a lot of the living and working and playing that will be going on there. So, yeah, we're seeing just the beginnings right now. We've out there with just some of the early-on residential.
Because it's just like any other city zoning and planning that's out there. We do our best, and then as things come in, there has to be adjustments made to accommodate changes and whatnot. We just try and do our best.
Building it, hoping they will come.
Yeah.
And the phases that we're seeing developed right now, Ryan, are... There's distance between where we're developing now and this adjustment.
So, individuals...
Probably not even showing this regional park to buyers, for example, because it's always away.
Yeah, so individuals may be buying here. They haven't bought in this vicinity thinking that there was gonna be a larger park, so they...
Because there's open space in the neighborhood that are being built right now.
That's good to know.
I can say that as we've met with commercial developers and brokers and people that are interested in bringing those things to the city, as we discuss some of these early-on plans of this could become an athletic complex, large park area over here, that has gained... Created a lot of interest from them, and we start hearing things like hotels and restaurants that we normally don't hear about out there if we weren't to have something like this. So, it's definitely gaining interest from those people, not just in Olympia, but throughout the whole city and our other commercial areas, too.
And that's a good part. That park's gonna provide a lot of... Yeah.
So, let me go back to kind of a question Forrest brought up. I'm trying to think of how to best phrase it. So, in taking the value from K towards the park, what kind of... This is kind of a question for you and Michael. What kind of guarantees are we... That we get that value when we give it up at Olympia?
Well, I think one of the easy answers for that is we're trading undeveloped, unprepared land that's just... It's raw up there, right? And we're getting prepared, pretty much developed. It was entitled with residential lots, flat land. So, we're...
At the park?
For the new parks. So, hence the consideration and the trade-offs. The developer is giving up some developable land and asking for entitlements here that can kind of help them offset those costs, I'm sure, for all the land work and entitlement work and everything that has to happen. Because even though they're entitled with their development agreement, they still have to go through the civil design, the approval process with staff, and all the heartache we put them through here to get to that point where they can actually develop a lot.
And as that happens, we still have that control over that park property, or that potential park property. Nobody can take that away.
Yeah, well, the property trade will happen. The city will be owners, be simple owners of the new park property down along the creek that can develop into a park, and it's wide open. It's all... The utilities are there, the roads are there.
Or in worst case, a service yard.
If the city council chooses to do something.
But it's city property.
Let's hope not. That brings up a question. It spurred a question for me. So, the proposed park, regional park, how many lots were entitled there?
I think it was like 76.
Okay, so there is some entitlement.
Yeah, they're losing some lots there.
There are losing some lots there, which just keep that in mind, too. I mean, it's different. It's not the same amount that...
Well, if I remember correctly...
It's not a one-for-one by any means, but there is some.
If I remember correctly, when we entitled that, those were the big one-acre lots.
They were the bigger lots.
They were the one-acre lots, and the developer did go through the work of getting a development agreement, doing the engineering, doing the design, grading some of the land. If you go out there, you can see some work done that was there. So, yeah, it was... All that cost is part of that consideration that we're trying to make up for.
Okay.
Yep. That's where I was gonna build my house, so... When I won the lottery.
I was gonna say, that's the $3 million dollar...
Yeah, there you... Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
I think we've got enough discussion here. Is somebody ready to make a motion? Darryl, you're kind of...
I see some nodding.
Did you have another comment? I'll let you... I'm not saying we're... If you have more comments, by all means.
No more comments. Blaine did a good job. He did a good job explaining that. And I appreciate my fellow commissioners' good questions that you're asking.
Yeah. I'll entertain a motion. I can't make it.
Yeah.
I would, but I can't. Sorry, go ahead.
So, I'll make a recommendation of approval for item 4.6 with staff's recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion by Jackson.
And access pedestrian... Looking at pedestrian access.
With an added recommendation of pedestrian access from Olympia to K Park. Thank you, Joe.
I'll second.
Second by... Okay, we have a motion by Jackson, a second by Darryl. We'll do a vote. We'll start with Forrest.
No.
Jackson.
Yes.
Heather.
No.
Tara.
Yes.
Darryl.
Yes.
Andrea.
No.
Another 3-3, right? My vote is yes for this one as well. So, that does move forward with a positive recommendation to City Council. All right, we will... Let's see. Move on to items 4, 7, 8, and 9. I don't know... We want to open up public hearings for this. Is there any presentation that we want to do? So, I'll just... We'll just open the public hearing. I guess we go ahead and allow... There's a couple of individuals here. If they want to, I guess we can take comment as well, and then we will continue the items, I guess, is the process, right? So...
Right, and again, on your motion sheet, I just want to make sure we...
We don't close the public hearing. We continue the public hearing and continue the item as well, right? So, I guess we can do that under the same motion as well. We don't need to have two different motions. Or do we need to have a separate motion to continue? We can do it. We'll handle it with two motions, Angie. Yeah, well, I meant, we can... Sorry. Two separate ones for each item. Okay, just to... I want to make sure we're following protocol here. Okay, so again, we've got items 4, 7, 8, and 9 on here in discussion for the Creek Ridge Master... Or the Creek Ridge Cove information... Development out here. The first item is 4.7, and this is for, again, an amendment for the general plan. So, looks like we're losing public, so we'll just move forward. But what I'm gonna do is we're gonna open up the public hearing for item 4.7 at this time, if there's any comments. Seeing none from the remaining staff that's here, I will entertain a motion to... We want to continue the public hearing without date.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing of item 4.7.
Second.
We have a motion by Forrest and a second by Heather. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We will continue the public hearing, and then I will entertain a motion to continue item 4.7 without date as well.
I'm moved.
I have a motion by Andrea. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heather. She got you. We will do a roll call vote for this one to continue the item. So, we'll begin with Andrea.
Yes.
Darryl.
Yes.
Tara. Heather.
Yes.
And Jackson.
Yes.
And Forrest.
Yes.
All right, that motion can... Or that item continues without date. We'll move on to item 4.8, which is a consideration and recommendation to approve the Creek Ridge Cove Master Development Agreement. So, this is... Wait a minute. I guess they're both... I was looking at 4.9. They both say amend the master development agreement. Is 4.8... Should that have been a zoning? Is that wrong? They're both MDAs?
Yes.
4, 8, and 9 are both?
Creation of a new MDA.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, there's two different MDAs.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I got it now. Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification. I was confused for a moment. So, item... We will open the public hearing for item 4.8 for a consideration and recommendation to approve the Creek Ridge Cove Master Development Agreement. Seeing no comment, I will entertain a motion to close... Or, excuse me, to continue the public hearing without date.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing without date.
All right, I have a motion by... Thank you. A motion by Tara and a second by Heather. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then I will entertain a motion for item 4.8 to continue item 4.8.
I'll make a motion to continue item 4.8.
Thank you. We have a motion by Jackson and a second by Heather. We will do a roll call vote for this one. Forrest.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Tara.
Yes.
Darryl.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to item 4.9, which is a consideration and recommendation to amend the Creek Ridge Master Development Agreement. And this is open for a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Seeing no comment, I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion by Heather, and who was that? Was that... Second by Jackson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then I'll entertain a motion to continue item 4.9 without date.
I'll make a motion to continue item 4.9 without date.
A motion by Heather.
Second.
Second by Forrest. Do a roll call vote. Forrest.
Yes. Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Tara.
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
And Andrea.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item five, and I do have a comment that I would like to make, I mean, on the record, and nobody's here to hear it, but I, I appreciate what city council, city staff, and everybody is doing to try and improve, um, our community as a whole. There's a lot of comments that are made on social media or even in a public meeting here regarding lining of pockets or, you know, things like that, and for those that don't know the staff or the situation, uh, to make comments like that unbased is very disheartening, and, uh, I just, I don't appreciate it, and I, I just want everybody to know that I appreciate the work going on, I appreciate the professionalism that transpires, I appreciate the work that's being done to improve our community, and for those to be bold out behind their screens making flippant comments like that is uncalled for, and I, I condone that behavior, I just want everybody to know that, and I'll leave it at that, so, any other comments?
But I, I do want to add to that and say that I'm thankful for everybody that did come in tonight.
Absolutely, no, agreed.
Glad that we were able to have further discussion and create greater transparency.
Thank you, no, I do appreciate the comments that are come and brought professionally, thank you for that clarification, I, I 100% agree with what you're saying, so, I just, it, it's unfortunate there's situations out there that people have unbiased comments that are very
Chair, if I may, I would also like to express our appreciation, again, for our commissioners, there's an, there's a understanding of the importance of trying to help the council do the business of the city, I appreciate that you're willing to make recommendations, both positive and negative, with, with, uh, recommendations for further consideration, so I appreciate that you're willing to let, you know, items move forward for the council to, uh, conduct their business, so, thank you.
Yeah.
And I know it was difficult, and I appreciate the concerns that were expressed tonight, so I know that was hard.
Yeah, yeah, and unfortunately, we don't know all of the things that go on in the background, you know, when it comes to financial situations, that's not our purview, right? So the financial considerations with, you know, the cost of lots and switching things up and things like that, nobody's getting their pockets lined, it's really all trying to be for the good of the community as a whole, so I appreciate that as well, so, okay. Any other thoughts, comments?
I'll, I'll add one comment, uh, that perhaps can go on to city council, and I think it was, uh, Marie Pistana, I think was her name? Marie, Marie Pistana. She had a comment, if not city-owned, uh, and I think I would maybe respond to that by saying that, yes, it is city-owned, but it's also a greater city issue. And so as I look at it, I look at it as a greater city issue, uh, and there, I, I think, taken as a whole, I think it's a, a good solution.
Thank you.
I agree, my, my takeaway was, R1, 6,000.
Right.
We need to get it.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a good comment. All right. Thank you all for being here, it was a long night, we haven't had many of these, unfortunate, you know, I mean, really, when you think about it, it's still early, it's not even 10 o'clock yet, but, uh, um, a lot going on, a lot happening in our community, so thank you all for your hard work.
Oh, I did think of, sorry, one last, one last thing to add.
I hadn't moved on, so go ahead.
Yeah, and I think it's probably been reiterated or iterated or talked about earlier, but I think the, uh, changes that have already been agreed to, coming down from 300 to 113 is already quite a bit.
Yes.
And so I think that was also taken into my, into consideration, and I think recommended to council to consider as well.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Sorry, that's it.
No, no apologies, what's one more minute tonight? All right. Next city council meeting will be next week, April 9th, and then in two weeks, we get to see each other again, uh, and those items, hopefully that we continue, will be on there, and we can continue moving this, this process forward, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Forrest, second by Heather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all.